Good evening. Welcome to our meeting. Welcome to all of you, all of you in the cafe and all of you at home. This is very exciting. We've never had this many people in a very long time. Mrs. Logan, would you please call the roll? Mr. Rebel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Pearl?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan? Yeah, Mrs. Logan, would you please call the roll? Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to add forty-five minutes to our first public comment section in order to hear from our community.
So moved.
Logan, would you please call the roll if you're ready? Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Okay, um, Board President's comments. I have a little something I would like to read. This came to me last week and it says that we are writing on behalf of Jenny Logan, Treasurer and CFO, as a member of the Fair School Funding Plan. We have had the distinct pleasure of working with Jenny since we all began with the Fair Funding Plan on November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. She's dying right now. She doesn't, she didn't know we were doing this. During her three and a half years as a vital team member, Jenny has established herself as an outstanding educational leader, an impassioned representative of your school district, community, and advocate for all Ohio students. As a member of the work group ourselves, we wanted to commend and recognize Jenny Logan for her outstanding contributions toward creating and advocating for Ohio's new state funding formula. Of all the Treasurers and Superintendents across the state, Jenny was selected to join this group in part because she has garnered the respect of her colleagues statewide and fellow leaders in education, as well as her vast knowledge in her field and experience as a leader. The overwhelming support from across the state in this work group received is a direct result of the immeasurable efforts of its members. We want to thank you for allowing Jenny Logan to be part of the work group and for your Board of Education's support throughout this process. Please know that this took a Herculean effort to create, present, testify, and advocate to get this plan passed, and Jenny did an outstanding job of balancing the demands of serving the students and families in your school community while taking on this additional responsibility. We are so grateful that she did. Throughout this process, Jenny's work ethic and passion for serving on the work group was second to none. So on behalf of Speaker and Representative Patterson, we are presenting, would like to present Jenny with this enclosed challenge coin to thank her for sharing, oh, excuse me, thank you for sharing Jenny Logan with Fair School Funding Work Group. It means so much to so many young Ohio learners, and it's signed by Ryan Pendleton, who's the CFO in Akron City Schools, and Thomas Holzer, who's the Superintendent of Perryburg City Schools. So, thank you, Mrs. Logan.
Thank you. Well, I cannot believe that you got by with that surprise and I had no idea, so.
I know.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well deserved, Jenny.
Well deserved.
Very well deserved.
And I pulled it off.
Okay.
I think those that attend regularly know how much we talk about your expertise and how lucky we are in Lakota to have you, and I think that that letter just from a state perspective demonstrates your accountability, but also your advocacy for the kids across the state, and so, thank you. It's awesome. We really appreciate you.
A little overwhelming right now, but I appreciate it. We're gonna, I'm gonna give you this, Jenny, because I did not read the whole letter.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we should read more. Read the whole letter. Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Miller, can you top that?
No. Congratulations, well deserved, and just a quick welcome to our community. Thank you for being here.
Mrs. Logan?
I'm gonna reserve my time for the rest of the meeting, so thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, we have come to the first part of the meeting where we will hear public comments on agenda items. Just an FYI, because we do know that we have a full house both upstairs and downstairs. If you're unable to speak during this evening's public comment due to the limit, time limit, you may email board members your thoughts at schoolboard@lakotaonline.com. And while we may not respond directly to you due to the volume of emails, we do read every one of them. And I know that some of you have not been here before and not had an opportunity for public comments, so I just want to reiterate a little bit of our policy. We don't direct comments personally to individuals. We don't name staff by name. We are respectful. You have your three minutes. We don't use obviously abusive, obscene, or irrelevant language. Um, I think that's all. We have forty-five minutes or seventy-five minutes tonight. So Mr. Zink is going to man the list. What he's going to do, especially for those in the cafe, he will call the first person to come to the mic and then he will say the second and third person as well, so just so that you're ready and can be in line.
So first up is Isaac Ika, Michael Baumann, and Brian Neff. My name is Isaac Adi. My address is fifty-eighteen Rialto Ridge Drive, Westchester. Mine is a question, because the last meeting, we had the issue of masks came up, and the board said they're gonna follow signs. I believe that transparency is very critical and very important to the entire community. We later got an email that states that masks is now mandatory, and if you go through the survey that was taken, it doesn't tally with that conclusion. So the question I have is, what is the procedure for arriving in that conclusion? How did you arrive on that conclusion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go, Omar.
Hi, Michael Baumann, six-nine-four-zero Rushwood Court.
Yes, it's a little closer thing.
Is that better?
Yep.
All right.
Perfect.
Michael Baumann, six-nine-four-zero Rushwood Court. Here to address the school board regarding the mask mandate. I wanted to voice my support for the mask mandate to keep our kids in school this year, to keep them healthy, and continue following guidelines set forth by our Butler County Health Department and the CDC. My children are not eligible for vaccine yet and do not have any built-up immunity to COVID- nineteen, so the mask mandate will help support them in staying healthy and also will help protect members of our community by reducing the spread and transmission of COVID- nineteen. You know, the, as I mentioned, the Butler County Health Department, the CDC, and Cincinnati Pediatric Society all recommend that masks are worth the inconvenience and slow and reduce the transmission of COVID- nineteen. I encourage the school board to continue to update their policy in regards to the mask mandate based on vaccine availability, case load, and other factors, and recommendations from our health professionals. So I came up here because I don't want to be, you know, hear about the first child at Lakota, hear about my kid spreading it to someone else who is more vulnerable than they are, and just make it known that, you know, we're all in this together and support the school board in their decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia White. Brian Neff, Area View Drive, Lakota graduate, father of five. I've lived in the school district my entire life. For those on the board, I want to remind you of the following bylaw under Code one-twenty-three, Section H that requires you to render all decisions based on available facts rather than succumbing to the influence of special interest groups. We're now in our third school year dealing with COVID, as you mentioned last meeting. Five hundred twenty-eight days ago, we were told two weeks to slow the spread. This virus is not going away. Superintendent Miller, you were influenced by the medical community on your masking decision? I would love to see the information they gave you proving that cloth masks stopped the spread of COVID. I would also like to know why these same medical professionals have never recommended masking children during any other time in their careers, especially during severe flu outbreaks, SARS, and H-one-N-one. Out of sixteen thousand Lakota students, only eight hundred twenty-eight have tested positive. How many of those kids ended up in the ICU? How many died? Let's talk about the quarantine guidelines. Last year, it's estimated several thousand Lakota students were pulled out of their classes and kicked out of school for two weeks. How many of those quarantined kids ever tested positive for COVID during that two weeks? My guess is zero. Mr. Miller, you have not stood up against the unproven quarantine protocols. You have the data to show kids are not significant vectors of transmission. How does COVID magically disappear at lunch when no masks are worn? Or during contact sports like soccer, football, or basketball? Or while thousands of students attended football games last Friday night without masks? In Lakota's entire history, the district has never required kids to quarantine because they sat near someone that had the flu or any other infectious disease. The CDC quarantine guidelines are based on political party influence, fear, and control. May twenty-twenty-one, Washington Examiner headline. Emails show high-powered teachers' union pressured CDC to change school reopening guidance. Another headline, teachers gave, teachers' union gave nearly twenty million dollars to the Democratic Party before influencing CDC school reopening guidance. So many parents have lost all trust in the medical experts, starting with Dr. Fauci. The top infectious disease doctor in the entire country has changed his stance on masking fourteen times, and I will email you the video tonight. Out of seventy-three million kids in the U.S., ages zero to seventeen, only four hundred and twenty-five have passed away with COVID in the last twenty months. In that same time, fifty-three thousand kids have died from all other causes. It is time to put things in perspective. The risk for severe illness or death for kids is very, very, very low. I'm not asking you to ban masks. If parents want their kids in masks, please do so. But stop allowing them to project their fear on thousands of kids that want to come to school and see their kids and their teachers smile back at them. Mr. Miller, please stop subverting to fear being pushed tonight by those demanding masks on all children. Stand up against the unscientific quarantine guidelines and give the parents a choice on masking.
Excuse me, we did not get, be able to hear the call. I'm gonna ask you nicely one more time to not, please don't applaud and have outbursts. It will just make it harder for you to get heard. We do have the ability and the policy to remove people who continue to have outbursts.
Omar Hagar.
Remember this, say the game again.
Omar Hagar.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jessica. I live at fifty-nine sixty-four Kensington Trail. I'm a mother of a Lakota second grader, a registered nurse, and a Lakota alumni myself. I'm here in support of the mask mandate for all students, staff, and visitors. But before I talk about that, I'd like to take just one moment to recognize something that I think is incredibly important, and that is that I truly believe underneath what everyone from both sides is saying, there are two motivating factors. One is love and concern for our kids, and two is a desire for normalcy. I absolutely share both of those feelings. Where I differ from my friends against masking is the path to normalcy. I see masking as the smallest possible sacrifice we could make so that our children can be in-person learning, can stay in-person learning, and so that we have a safe way for them to enjoy all of the fun parts of school that we have known from years past. Because the fact is that COVID doesn't care how tired of all of this we are, and it's surging again. Last year, I chose VLO for my daughter because I didn't know if in-person would be sustainable or safe. But what last year showed us was that in-person learning with masking worked, that children are resilient, and that the teachers, staff, and administrators of Lakota can make lemonade out of lemons. Like everyone else here, I have very strong personal feelings about masking, but my feelings shouldn't make decisions about community health. COVID certainly doesn't care about my feelings. So what the experts say, Cincinnati Children's Hospital, our own local hospital that just happens to be ranked fourth in the nation, has said Cincinnati Children's recommends that all children returning to in-person school wear masks, regardless of vaccination status. Further, they say that masks are about eighty-five percent effective in preventing the spread of the virus that causes COVID- nineteen. This is direct from their website. The American Academy of Pediatrics is comprised of over seventy thousand pediatricians across the U.S. They recommend universal masking because a significant portion of the student population is not yet eligible for vaccines, and masking is proven to reduce transmission of the virus and to protect those who are not vaccinated. These are the same doctors that you take your children to year after year for well visits and that you would call in the middle of the night if your child had a health scare. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K through twelve schools regardless of vaccination status. And I could have pulled up twenty more major medical organizations, but I don't have enough time. So I would like to say thank you, Matt Miller, for listening to the clear consensus from experts and not just feelings, and for making this important but difficult decision about our community's health. I've seen the names you've been called on social media, the threats to your job and your livelihood, and I know that this wasn't actually an easy choice for you to make with all that looming overhead, but it was the right one. Finally, I ask the board and our community, what could we accomplish if we put the kind of energy that is going towards this division and argument into something better? Our children are watching us and our behavior. They're seeing how to treat other people and how to follow rules. We are Lakota and we are better together. Thank you. Thank you.
Darby Bodie's next.
Hi, my name is Alicia White. All four of our children.
Alicia, can you please state your address, please?
Yes, seventy-two thirteen Timbernell Drive, Westchester.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. My name is Alicia White. All four of our children have attended the Lakota school system their entire education. Our youngest is currently in junior high. Two of our oldest have graduated from East, and our forever seventeen-year-old died from suicide January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, just at the start of COVID. I have no blame to place on COVID mandatory masks or vaccinations for the death of our sweet seventeen-year-old, Hope. We knew very little of the reality of her inner mental torment, but knew some degree she struggled with self-esteem and anxiety. Much like thousands of other teenagers, for fear of what others might think, she shared very little about her emotional struggles. On the outside, she seemed to find a very healthy, normal teenager, but on the inside, a war was raging for her life. On January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, one small argument in the car over me wanting to make sure she was safe at work, and thirty minutes later, she was gone. Our whole life changed forever because of one decision based upon one impulsive emotional moment a teenager was having who was ill-equipped to know what to do with it alone. Hope spiritually and physically was gone. Simultaneously, hope was being snapped out of this entire nation by COVID. It's not easy being a teenager with the drama, peer pressure, friends, groups, and hormones, but the truth is that children this generation are going through an incredible amount of turmoil. This world is shifting ideals and fundamental belief systems quicker than policy can be written. Whether you believe they are good or bad, the effects on a generation cannot be ignored or avoided. Now you add COVID, death of loved ones, mask mandates, isolation, cancellation, vaccination, and voices shouting, "Don't be the one to kill grandma", to what kids and teenagers already struggle with. It's a recipe for trauma and mental breakdown. According to science and psychology assessment, until a person is twenty-seven, they don't even have the ability to process emotional and rational thinking side by side. The Board of Pediatric Medicine, YELST studies, and many others have recognized and spoken out concern that mental health risks, mask mandates, and COVID policy will have an entire generation of kids. Suicide and mental health issues among children have skyrocketed since COVID. COVID, look it up yourself. Could it be that we are unintentionally killing the spirit of thousands of children while trying to save the point zero-zero-one percent of kids who might die from COVID or might give it to someone who does? I fear what hope was left for many has now been destroyed by your knee-jerking response to mask mandate. Humanity was never created to bear the responsibility of keeping each other healthy from dying from sickness. We eat, drink, breathe things into our body every day that can cause sickness or even death. Could you imagine the feeling of someone who felt mentally responsible for making sure everywhere around them never ate, breathed, or came into contact with?
This is right. I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
I need, I need it.
It's very hard for me to come and share.
I understand, I understand that, but in order for us to treat everybody fairly, we have to give everybody three minutes, and I'm so sorry for your loss.
Can I say one sentence?
I have, I'm sorry. I have to keep three minutes to everyone. I apologize.
Jessica Williams is next.
My daughter wore a mask, my eleven-year-old daughter, and in the school, teachers and students were saying when she put it down because of the trauma, the PTSD of her sister that couldn't breathe and die, and now she has to wear a mask and can't breathe, and the trauma was significant.
Ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna have to ask.
Do you know what that does to an eleven-year-old that has a loss with a suicide?
Jessica Williams is next.
Jessica Williams?
No, you, ma'am.
Darby Bodie's next, I thought.
No.
My name's Omar Hagar.
Omar, yeah.
Lower the mic.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have a lot to say. My name's Omar Hagar. I'm at four-five-six-five Osprey Point Drive. And I just came here to represent the parents that kept their kids in VLO all last year, not because we were scared of a virus, but because I don't want them in masks. Okay? I know that the kids are not the drivers of the virus. Plenty of studies show that. The kids, they have not been proven to get their teachers infected, and I don't appreciate people using the kids as human shields to calm the hypochondria of the adults. To me, that's cowardice, and I don't appreciate in case there's any sort of funding kickbacks for kids to be following guidelines. If that's the case, then that makes the adults pimps. Okay? That's the way I feel. Okay, now I do have some, um, some medical field experience, and I know that learning how to use a mask properly is very important. Otherwise, you can contaminate it. So by the time these kids come home after school, they're basically wearing a Petri dish on their face. You cannot expect them to use them properly and to have the proper hygiene to go throughout their day, trying to pay attention to the teacher and trying to not touch your face. It's ridiculous. Okay, so we had registered our kids, my husband and I, for in-person for this school year. Okay, but we saw the foreshadowing on the websites that the masks might be coming back according to the CDC or whoever. Okay? So we kind of waited for the last minute to invest in backpacks and lunchboxes. We knew what was coming. We felt it. So as soon as we saw the mask mandates come back, we withdrew our kids. They are not in VLO through Lakota. They are homeschooled now. We're completely out of the district. We're disgusted with the district. Because of that, the kids need to be able to have that normalcy back that we were promised. Okay? I'm hearing about cases and do as you're told and just follow the rules, and, but no one's talking about the actual deaths. The kids are fine. They suffer more with the masks on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Harsh.
Hi, my name is Darby Bodie. I live in Cherrywood Lane in Westchester. So first of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak, and I'm appreciative of your service, and I know it's a lot of work. As I said, my name is Darby Bodie, and I'm a parent of two age schoolchildren, two school-aged children, and a candidate for the Lakota School Board. Regarding masks, I just want to say this. In addition to the psychological and developmental effects that masks have on our children that are, let's make, make no mistake about it, profound and extraordinarily damaging. Face masks are highly contaminated, and the regular, regular use of them is not just dangerous to the person wearing them, but dangerous to anyone who comes in contact with them or any objects that came in contact with, with our children, such as doorknobs and desktops. They're dangerous. It should come as no surprise that a piece of cloth worn on a child's face ends up as a veritable Petri dish of pathogens. Every adult in this entire school system, from the board to the administrators, to the faculty, to every parent, should know that the mouth is the nastiest place on your body. Even the dirtiest backside can't compete. Recent analysis from the University of Florida examining the masks our kids are wearing identified no less than ninety-six unique strands of biological contaminants, including a large percentage of antibiotic-resistant strands. A short list of these pathogens include those associated with pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, encephalitis, Lyme disease, Legionnaires' disease, diphtheria, and pathogens that promote infections and food poisoning. As I said, these masks are not just dangerous to the child wearing them. They endanger the entire school. It feels like mass insanity to think that there are adults that don't understand this. The regular use of these masks is an abuse of our child psyche, and it is abuse of their health. It is child abuse. School boards who are persisting with mask mandates without considering the constitutional ramifications and the severe consequences to our children's health are being subjected to lawsuits around the country. This is perfectly understandable to me and should be understandable to anyone who looks into even half of what I, what I presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Richardson.
Hi, my name is Jessica Williams, and I live on Dawson Drive in Liberty Township. I spoke at the last meeting, and I really appreciate the shift in course after more and more data was kind of pushing towards that and that, you know, children's and the Butler County Health and everybody was all in agreement. I actually just wanted to talk about and ask about the other items that are also important other than masking and distancing, but the ventilation systems, and just would like more information about anything that you guys have done to help that, because, you know, every little bit helps. Also, I was wondering, I've seen Lebanon already coming out with their own dashboard every week about the number of quarantines, and they're also pointing out the number of quarantines that would have been happening if people had not been wearing masks. So I think that could also be valuable information. So I know, I don't think it's like required this year or something, but it would be really nice to know kind of what's going on. I mean, we just got our first notification letter today from Van Gordon. So we know it's happening. We know positives are, are happening at school. Contacts are happening. But luckily, I did not get a notice that we needed to quarantine because my kid had his mask on. So, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mrs. Harsh?
Doug Edwards.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Harsh, and I live at eight-two-four-five Lakeshore Drive, Westchester, Ohio. I am here because I feel like everyone should have the freedom to choose. I am not against masks. I am just for freedom of choice. The mask we are handing out at our children's school, right on the box, if any of you guys would like to check out, says, "Warning: This does not prevent you from getting any sickness or illness." So all those cloth masks that you guys are all wearing do not work. My daughter is a two thousand twelve graduate of Lakota East with honors, full scholarship. She's now a physician assistant. When she goes in to see a COVID patient, she wears an N-ninety-five mask, tightly, properly fitted, so she has marks on her face. She wears gloves. She wears a gown and a splash shield. That's what she wears to go in to see COVID patients. And you know, she has never gotten COVID until exactly seven days after she got the Moderna vaccine. Now, she used to be yesterday's hero, and now she's a zero because she has no choice to get the vaccine or be fired. So these are our freedoms we're talking about. The kids are suffering. This is frightening to them. Look at the people in this room. I feel so sorry for the people that are masked. They're so fearful and frightened. It's maddening. The kids, these older people are frightened. You know how frightened our kids have to be? And that poor lady talking about her daughter committing suicide. That's horrible, but that's what masks are doing to kids. The key with what she said of the mask is the ventilation, fresh air. That is the key, and I have all this data here. Crack open windows and doors when possible. Be outside when possible. Use an ionization system. And I have all this data here. My daughter read it all, the physician assistant, and said, "Mom, you're right on." A German study said twenty-six hundred children, their parents, sixty-eight percent of parents, they have the side effects of headache, difficulty concentrating, decreased happiness, malaise, impaired learning, and fatigue. Even if masks work to save one person, does this justify the collateral damage that you're doing to our children? It does not. It does not. Another study from Harvard University ensuring that young children have safe, secure environments in which to grow, learn, and develop. in which to grow, learn, and develop healthy brains and bodies is not only good for the children themselves, but to build a strong foundation for a thriving, prosperous society. My other son is a two thousand fourteen graduate, a mechanical engineer with.
Your time is up. Thank you.
If you, would you guys like to see any of my research? Because I made extra copies.
You can certainly leave it with Mr. Miller, and he will see that we get it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Suzanne Bruce.
Good evening. My name is Dana Richardson. I live at nine, seven, five, six, Berry Hill Drive in Westchester. I'm a mom of two elementary students in the district. I'm also part of the medical community and have been providing anesthesia as a certified registered nurse anesthetist for the past twelve years. Twelve years of wearing a mask, I'm fine. I'm here tonight to thank you for making the decision to acquire masks for all staff and students right now. I fully support your decision. And I respect that you followed the guidance of experts in healthcare and public health. And I encourage you to continue to follow their advice, especially as things change as we move throughout the year. I'd also like to encourage you to look at other ways, just beyond masks, like the person a few before me mentioned, HEPA filters. Portable, some small portable HEPA filters can be a great tool for a classroom. They can be quiet and improve some of the ventilation issues that we have. And I think maybe some of our older buildings. I'd love to hear more about that, about what has been discussed or addressed previously to, to improve air quality for our students. Uh, another thing is my eleven-year-old daughter told me today that kids in her lunchroom aren't spaced out quite like they were last year. That concerns me just a little bit, knowing that there's multiple levels of things that we can do to be helpful that aren't as restrictive as masks during times when children need a mask break at lunchtime and spacing out seemed to be effective last year as we saw that our numbers were pretty low within school transmission. I'd be interested to hear about if that would be something to be readdressed for the year. Um, I also wanted to thank you as a working parent for these preventative measures to help reduce quarantine times for kids and allow me to be at work where I'm critically needed at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Joshua Colfer and then Sarah Webster.
Hello, my name is Doug Edwards. I live at eight, one, two, seven, Long Meadow Drive. I have two sons in the Lakota School District, one at Hope Elementary, one at Woodland Elementary. I'm here to voice my opinion on current mask mandate being imposed on my children. I'm not going to sit here and dictate to you stats and figures. I'm sure you have all that information at your disposal. Simply here to speak for my children. I'm no way attempting to impose my will on anyone here. I'm simply asking for the same courtesy. I'm not telling anyone here how to care for their children. I'm simply asking for the same courtesy. My youngest son is in second grade. He missed nearly half his kindergarten year because of COVID. He didn't spend his entire first grade year in a mask. When we were formed, informed that this body reversed their previous stance of masks being optional, he cried out loud. I'm here to speak for him. This is not his burden to bear, nor is his responsibility to protect anyone else. He is a child. He is my child. And I speak for him. Your goal here tonight is to determine what is best interest of our children, that's interest of the children and your care, considering the mental anguish being caused because of, because I fear this is not being considered in its proper weight. My sons mean the world to me. And I'm here to speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rome Webster.
Joshua Cow for Dundee Drive, Westchester. So I, in my life, have been a thrill seeker to a certain extent. Ridden a motorcycle, do crazy things on boats, all sorts of stuff. Life is a degree of probabilities and risks and things that you do to be safe, like seat belts, et cetera. I wish we spent all this time that we're spending now on investing in mental health because this little mask here is not that important. Our kids, we have three of them, and they are happy. And they have masks that are certified by national standards. So that is possible without necessarily an N ninety-five. So there have been a lot of really good speakers up here with a lot of good science. I understand science. I am not afraid of not wearing a mask, but I choose to make choices that protect me while I do risky things. And so I do a lot of risky things that I accept that responsibility. And I also take, use smarts while I do those things, which one of those things is wearing this mask. So I know this is a challenging thing, and I appreciate what you've done. I am also an engineer. I understand science. And it makes total sense to continue to look at this over and over and look at the data as it changes. But right now, this makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richie Root.
Hi, Sarah Webster, six, three, nine, nine, Castle Hill Drive in Liberty Township. Um, the first thing I need to say is something I wasn't planning on saying, that is that after hearing from Alicia about her daughter Hope, I hope that everybody in here can't say that emotions and feelings don't matter. That has got to be one of the most horrendous things I've heard come out of someone's mouth. Because we are humans, and we are emotions and feelings. We are physical health. We are lots of things. But don't tell me that feelings and emotions don't matter, because they do. Second thing I want to say is that my son, who made this sign, this is his sign. He wrote in the middle, "You can't beat us down." Do you understand that our kids feel beat down? He wrote this, not me. I didn't tell him to. This is the sign he wrote, "Stop the madness, burn our masks." A son of mine, who's a sophomore at East, in two thousand and nine, spent eight days in the PICU with a H one, N one virus. So I know about watching somebody in pain. I was told two times by my doctor, snippy, he burns area there for the children, to prepare to have your son leave. Two times I was told that, Matt. I know what that looks like. I felt it. I stared it down. And I'm standing before you today to tell you that even with that experience of my life, it is not worth all of the suffering of all the other people. If it was my son sick right now, I would be saying to you, this vast majority of people, you have to put first before my son. That's the selfless thing to do. That's the selfless thing to do. You look at the numbers? Don't tell me, we, we spent a year and a half putting other people's need ahead of our own. Every time the goalpost is moved, every single time, it needs to stop. Please let it stop. We have done all we can to sacrifice and throw ourselves on the sword as long as we can. It is time for personal responsibility to kick in. And those people who are high risk, of which I am one, of which my husband is one, because of our health issues, let us choose what is too risky for us. And if we need to stay home, let us stay home. I hope that I have enough time to show you this. But I need you to hear this video for my son, who couldn't come tonight, but wanted to make his voice known. The volume was, the volume is bad. He's Gabriel, Woodland, fifth grade. Okay.
You can't, if you are wearing a mask, why, you couldn't, you can't see your friends. If you can't see your friend's face, you can't see all of these feelings. And I would think, you know their body language, but you can't see them.
Thank you, Mrs. Webster.
Don't shut my son off. I have time, right?
No, he just said time. I'm sorry.
One reason why I don't like masks. Second of all.
Okay, um, who's next?
I wish you could hear the rest of it. And then he says, "Why are you doing this?"
Rome Webster. And then Richie Root, then Lori Root.
I'm Richie Root. I live at five, eight, two, four, Kensington Trail, Liberty Township, Ohio. I'm a Christian author, ordained minister, and fellow Lakota graduate of class nineteen ninety-eight. My family line goes back close to eighty years here in the Lakota schools. Uh, thank you for taking time to listen to me. I'm pleading the case on behalf of all the kids at Lakota. My daughter has been approved of religious exemption. So I'm staying in the gap right now for the rest of kids. According to the U.S. federal law, Title II, the Civil Rights Act, U.S. Code forty-two, SS two thousand and eight, it is against Christian faith to wear a mask because it dishonors God. And we are made in His image, according to Genesis one, one, twenty-seven. So when Moses came down from the mountain after receiving the Ten Commandments, he had to cover his face because the glory was making his face literally glow. But when Jesus came into the picture, the veil was removed. Second Corinthians three, eighteen. We can, we can all draw close to Him with the veil removed from our faces. And with no veil, we are become like mirrors who brightly reflect the glory of the Lord Jesus. King James Version, uh, Isaiah twenty-five. And we, and He will destroy in this mountain the face of a covering cast over all people and the veil that is spread over all nations. And He will swallow up death and victory. And the Lord will wipe away the tears from all the faces. According to the Bible, we're to obey authorities God has put over us. But when it dishoners God, we are not. Daniel was told not to pray by his authorities because it was a new rule in the land. And he prayed anyway, and he was thrown into the lion's den. There's a time for everything in life. Eventually, you have to choose what you decide, what you believe in, in life. Does three hundred or five hundred doctors carry more weight than the Bible? Absolutely not. Who do you think founded the first schools and hospitals? The church was inspired through the Bible to start them both. It's my conviction and others that we will never dishonor God, even if we're thrown into the lion's den. If we are forced to dishonor God, then we will use the full power of Title II of the Civil Rights Act to prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. We believe every guardian should decide for their own child. If you are for masks and protecting your child, then do so. If you are against masks because of your family's faith, then do so. I believe if we can all win, I believe we can all win if we all focus on what's best for our own kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Matt Heidemann. Kristen Isaacs.
I'm Jerome Webster. And my name was called earlier. May I please speak?
Oh, okay.
I was downstairs. Jerome Webster, six, three, nine, nine, Castle Hill Drive, Liberty Township. I'd like you to go home and do a little experiment. Put a face mask on or, or, or a face covering. Go up to your mirror or your microwave, bring. What will you see? Condensation on the surface. Why? Condensation is caused by small water particles, water vapor. What lives in water vapor particles coming out of someone? If they're infected with a virus? A virus. Masks don't stop viruses, air, in aerosol particles from being expelled from infected people. Up until two thousand and twenty, face masks were never, outside of a, a hospital or a health service environment, were never designed for healthy people to wear. I sent these references today to all of you in an email from the New England Journal of Medicine. Quote, "We know that wearing a mask outside health care facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." From California Occupational Safety and Health Regulations. Quote, "Cloth face coverings do not protect against COVID nineteen." From the California Department of Health, "Face coverings may increase risk if users reduce their, their use of strong defenses." There is limited evidence to suggest that the use of cloth face coverings by the public during a pandemic could help reduce disease transmission. FDA, even a properly fitted N ninety-five mask does not protect or does not prevent illness or death. From the CDC, quote, "There is no scientific evidence for healthy people wearing masks." From neurosurgeon Dr. Russell Blaylock, quote, "There is no scientific, no scientific evidence that masks are effective. If you are not sick, you should not wear a face mask." From Columbia University, on the psychological harms of face masks, quote, "Many young people burst into, young children burst into tears or recoil when someone wearing a mask approaches. By putting on masks, we take away information that makes it especially difficult for children to recognize others and read emotional signals, which is unsettling and disconcerting." The teachers are now outside schools, wearing masks outside. They're all doing it. The first adult a child sees at school now, thanks to you, are, or whoever's telling them, are masked people.
Thank you.
It's wrong.
Heather Kamen.
Hello, I'm Matthew Adaman. My address is four, eight, four, three, Peak Drive. A lot of people have said a lot of the stuff I was going to say. Um, so I'm a welding engineer. So obviously, as the guy said before, I understand science, and I understand welding. And people who wear masks for the profession, they don't wear masks eight hours a day, right? I wear masks when I go into shops if I'm sending over a welder because I don't want the fumes to get in my face. But I don't wear that mask all day long. And there would be no benefit. As people who have listed all the numbers here, there, there's plenty of evidence to show children are not the ones that are being adversely affected by COVID. It is people with underlying conditions. Why is our school district not promoting better fitness, better nutrition? Why are we not having outdoor classes? People are talking about filters. If we do that, are we going to then not require masks? So if we upgrade our ventilation systems, is the mask mandate going to go away? Because it, like, because then what's the point of spending that money if it's not going to actually have a resourceful impact on our kids? My daughter is nine. She got taken, she, the first year we were here, she was in second grade. We were told two weeks, right? Let's look at the evolution, two weeks. And then we got out of school for two weeks, and we come back. The rest of her school year was gone, right? She didn't get to say bye to her teacher. She didn't get to say bye to her friends that she didn't have close contacts with, nothing. Then the second year she's in Lakota, masks, right? My daughter has slight asthma, has an inhaler. And this year, I will be filing for her not to have to wear it. But let's think about that now, right? So one of my friend's kid also has asthma. His kid went to school. Five teachers stopped him from walking inside the school, physically got in front of him. How is that okay? How is that how you want to be portrayed as a school district, right? Now that kid is going to be scared. What about bullying? This kid is still going through classes. Where's your mask? He's the only kid in his class that doesn't have a mask. So people, he's going to get bullied because he has an actual reason not to have a mask. So making it optional, then you are going to have less likely, right? Bullying is a major thing. So we, right, so we've had suicides have doubled in Ohio since COVID, doubled. Especially in children. We're, we're adversely affecting our youth. Point zero one percent of all children that get COVID have passed away. That is less than the flu. Right, we had somebody here talk about risks. I own a motorcycle. And yes, I wore a helmet. But if I'm going a hundred or six miles on the highway and I wreck, me wearing that helmet is not going to stop me from dying. So I can take as many precautions as I want. And let's think about how you, how you, the hierarchy of thought there. He was willing to ride a motorcycle in a dangerous life in that aspect, but not, but, but by not wearing a mask, it's more risky. Like, that is the ideology that people are thinking right now. They're more fearful of not wearing a mask. They're doing something extreme. But is, that's, and that should not be what kids should be taught. Con.
Thank you.
Sorry if I said that wrong.
Kristen Isaacs, Chestnut Hill Lane.
Could you speak into the mic a little more? Thank you.
Shorter than that. You can move it. The deaths in Ohio for children aged zero to nineteen during the entire eighteen or however many months of this pandemic, according to the Ohio COVID dashboard, is seven. So tragic to lose any precious human children when thinking of the population of Ohio that is a small number to use to dictate your policies. I wondered, how many children die from other things in Ohio? And I found the Ohio Child Fatality Review Twentieth Annual Report, which is an aggregate review of child deaths between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. It lays out how many children died during that five-year period and from what cause. Here are a few selected causes with the average yearly numbers. Car wreck, seventy-three. Suicide, fifty-seven. Homicide, fifty-three. Abuse and neglect, thirty-three. Drowning, twenty-five. Influenza from the year twenty seventeen, thirteen. And again, COVID over eighteen months is seven. Our children are ten times more likely to die in a car wreck than to die from COVID and we still drive with them. Are we considering the tremendous ill effects of the mental health of kids who are afraid to be near other people? How many more suicides will there be after this continued abuse? Think especially of our young students who need to see facial expressions to pick up on social cues and other integral aspects of nonverbal communication. You are harming children with these policies. Part of our job as teachers and trainers of the next generation is helping them to understand how to weigh risks of different activities, as others have said. It's an essential skill for an adult. So what, what are the risks of COVID? According to worldwide data from the WHO, your risk, all of us, not just children, from COVID, the death is zero point zero three percent. Is there any evidence that masks can reduce your already minuscule risk of COVID? The data the government has been using to make the recommendations have been mostly anecdotal. Stories. Real science includes randomized control trials with repeatable outcomes. You can't look at a school that required everyone to wear a mask to determine the efficacy of masks. There must be a control group, a group without masks to compare. Do you have any data like this? If you don't, you're following feelings and not facts. In the message you sent out mandating the masks last week, the survey results were pretty evenly spit, split. How about we, we, we return to the common sense notion of letting parents make decisions for their own children? Stop the nonsense. Don't mandate the masks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kate Brettest, Brettestig.
Thank you for the, oh, Heather Cameron, six, four, four, zero Anderson Drive, Liberty Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I appreciate the mandate on masks and I know that many immunocompromised and special needs families do as well. Those families depend on the altruism of those around them to keep them as safe as possible. I hope to see the mandate continue at least until our young children can be vaccinated for COVID-19. I would also like to know how mask exemption forms are being reviewed and what criteria is used to grant permission for students to unmask in class. I hope that if we have learned nothing else over the last year and a half, we have learned that we need to incorporate more curriculum explaining to our kids how to decipher credible, credible, evidence-based science from rhetoric and poorly conducted research studies. I also wanted to add that we are approaching the twenty-year anniversary of nine eleven. That day, everybody came together. We lost three thousand Americans. We all, you know, felt that pain. And we wanted to do what we could together to prevent something like that from ever happening again. So we passed the Patriot Act. Um, it was harder to get on airplanes. We, we sacrificed freedoms even though point zero zero two five percent of our population lost their life that day. You know, we've had to sacrifice things for the safety. So if we're going to post like nine eleven, we'll never forget. But then we also have lost six hundred thousand people plus to COVID-19. But we're not willing to do the most miniscule thing to protect one another. It's, it's ridiculous and it's embarrassing. We're, we're the laughing stock of the world right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Shaver.
Kate Brettestig, eighty, sixty-two St. Matthew Drive. First of all, I wanted to say thank you all so much for granting us the opportunity to speak today. And thank you so much for doing the right thing, helping protect our children, listening to the doctors, the science, the experts. Masks worked last year. That's why we had so few children end up in the hospital. That's why we had so few deaths. That's why most of our kids were able to stay in school. I will admit, I was hesitant. I, I was very concerned that it wasn't going to be enough. But you know, your policies proved that that was effective and it helped keep our kids in class. And it helped improve their mental health through this very trying time. The whole world is having a mental health crisis right now because COVID is terrible and COVID is awful. And COVID has killed over a half million people in this country alone. This isn't just, you know, we, we talk about things like people dying, kids dying in car accidents. And that's why we have seat belts and airbags and safety features. And scientists and engineers go back and review data annually on every model of every car to see how they can best protect and make decisions based on facts and science. And, um, you know, I, I know that everyone is tired of the masks. But I will say I have three children in this district. My high schooler is really happy that he can just go back to school and see all of his friends. He is vaccinated, but he doesn't care. He's more than happy to wear a mask if that means he can be in class and he can participate and he can do activities. My autistic six-year-old is fine wearing a mask. He is so happy that he gets to go and meet new friends. And that keeps him in class and in a school because virtually frankly would not work for someone with his disabilities. And I'm so happy that he has the opportunity to come to a safe place because he does have comorbidities that would keep him home otherwise. And, um, I, I am very disappointed by the reactions in our community when everyone is simply trying to keep everyone safe. And we have people who are behaving like bullies and treating people who just want to help our community. Like, you know, if they stamped their feet loud enough and yelled loud enough, that they're just going to get their way and they're going to break rules. And this is all about keeping everyone in our community safe. And thank you so much for continuing to do that. Science changes. The virus is changing. The Delta variant is different. Every doctor and nurse who I know has said that this is a different beast than COVID of last year. More people are hospitalized, more people are ending up on ventilators. Cases in this state alone have doubled within the last two weeks. Hospitalizations have doubled within the last two weeks. And if, and we are seeing caseloads that we didn't see since the peak of this. So I, I, I just ask that you continue to keep our children safe and to work through the best choices, especially considering that out of the twenty-three schools that in the district, only four, I'm sorry, fourteen of them are not eligible for vaccination. Fourteen schools out of twenty-three can't have vaccines yet. So, um, thank you again, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Schalkman.
Hello. Ashley Shower, five, two, seven, five, Inglewood Drive, Liberty Township. Come a little closer, Ashley.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the board members for taking the time to listen to the concerns expressed on behalf of the parents in our school district. My name is Ashley and I am a registered nurse with twelve years' experience under my belt. I'm going to be focusing on the science of wearing masks tonight and ask you to reconsider the face mask mandate for our children. I have included for your review, copies of links, twenty-seven to be specific, that all include ten to forty more studies in those studies against the efficacy and safety of masks. I can set them down if you want. Okay. Just a reminder that our children that are affected by COVID have a ninety-nine point nine seven survival rate. That's something that should be celebrated, not fear mongered. The first thing regarding science that I would like to bring to your attention of the effectiveness and effectiveness of both medical and non-medical face masks. There are existing scientific studies evidences that challenge the safety efficacy of wearing face masks as preventative intervention for COVID. As we all know, the COVID virus is spread via respiratory droplets. It is a virus with a diameter of sixty to one hundred and forty nanometers. Nanometers are a billionth of a meter. Medical and non-medical face masks thread diameters range from fifty-five micrometers to four hundred and forty micrometers. That's one millionth of a meter. This shows that the virus is actually one thousand times smaller and can easily pass through a face mask. This study shows that they are essentially ineffective. Secondly, studies are showing that bacteria, viruses and germs can harbor in the masks and create more harm. The flash drive has several studies that show the physical, psychological and physiological effects. A few to mention would be hypoxia, chronic stress and anxiety, headaches and decline in cognitive performances. Finally, it is not known what long-term effects it can have on a child's language and social skills as well as behavior, and particularly those atypical developing children during the early developmental years from wearing face masks. I personally have an autistic daughter enrolled and I would like her social skills to increase and not have her teachers' emotions blocked. That's what I want is my child to be social. Social development, as you know, is very important to all of the children becoming productive citizens. Parents and teachers work hard to bring about these life skills and most especially with our children of special needs. Covering the faces, like I said, can be detrimental. In the studies I provided you, I've also included information regarding COVID transmission and asymptomatic carriers, the PCR test fallacies and how they were recalled by the FDA, the lack of testing available for the Delta variant, which is a very specific kind of test that is not available widely. Also, I have studies on the bacteria from OR doctors and nurses. And it showed a lot of bacteria when they were in surgery for many hours. Just want to let you know, there's so much information on this drive. In the studies, science is never settled to conclude. It's always evolving and changing as we watch new data, data emerge. It is important to take into account when making medical-based decisions in a non-medical-based setting.
Thank you.
Justin Wells and Jennifer Richardson.
Where are, is, where's Kelly? Is Kelly, oh, Kelly, will you do me a favor and spell your last name for me?
It's, it's S.C.H.O.C.K.M.A.N.
Thank you.
My address is seventy-nine, ninety-nine Honeysuckle Lane, Westchester. I'm a Lakota alum and a mother of a recent Lakota East graduate and have two children currently enrolled in the Lakota Local School District. I'm here tonight to demand the Lakota Local School Board unmask our children. Since this board can't seem to follow the science, I will provide the science to the board. According to the Ohio Department of Health statewide since January of twenty twenty, there have been a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy, seventy-five children who have tested positive for COVID-19, which one thousand, three hundred and eighteen hospitalizations and a total of seven deaths. According to the CDC, children have a ninety-nine point nine nine seven percent survival rate. Given the science from both our state and federal governments, it's clear that COVID-19 poses a minimal risk to most children. Given the science, how you, how you justify placing a mask mandate on our children. Over the summer, you took a poll from Lakota parents, students and teachers, which showed a disapproval of mask mandate. You unilaterally imposed a mask mandate, mandate without following the science cited by our own government and statistics and against the will of the people who voted you into the office. Your mandate fails to consider the difficulty of children, especially with autism and other special needs, learning to read and the struggle to process a teacher's enunciation of words and social cues behind a piece of cloth. Two years ago, that was my child. Your mandates fail to explain how forcing a child to wear a mask covered in dirt, spit and sweat helps their immune system. Your mandate fails to account for the mental health effects on children by implying the air they breathe is toxic and the people around them are dying. In closing, I am telling the board to stop the unscientific policy of forcing this mask mandate on our children. Trust the parents to make the best decisions for their kids. And if you can't, we will constitutionally remove you. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Kurtz.
Um, I think, uh, Justin Wells is next.
Hello, I'm Justin Wells, four, four, eight, seven, Aspen Drive, Liberty Township, Ohio. So I'm going to try to not repeat everything that's already been said. We're obviously all passionate about masks. But, um, Lakota cannot be a school of choice and a school of mandates. You waited until the day before school started to announce your mask mandate because you only cared about registration numbers and your funding. Out of the ten nearby schools, only two other than Lakota made masks mandatory. To add insult to injury, you polled the community. The majority wanted freedom, choice and respect for individual autonomy, not mandates. The majority of your staff, the majority of the parents do not support your decision. This is America. If we have to lecture our representatives about freedom or the first principles of ethics, you are unfit for public service. This isn't about masks. It's about two years of consistent disregard for your boss, we the people, the parents. We have the authority, not you. And we also, we have rights and our problem is we don't know how to enforce them because we think that if we're scared or if there's a safety issue that our rights are somehow up for grabs, that's a lie. It's completely false. We also have a freedom of speech, which is why we're here. So I understand some people go ten seconds over, but we talk about equity all the time. Well, if somebody's child died and we want to talk about an extra ten seconds, they can have my time. So we've got, we've got issues here we need to deal with. This is Liberty Township, not tyranny township. Parents decide what's in the best interest of their kids. You took that choice away. It's nothing new. The school board has opposed educational choice where the parent's money follows the parent's child. You fought to lower the standards of a passing grade because Lakota is, is failing their students. Without lowering the standard for Lakota Ed choice would be an option. Once again, you set the standard of inferior product at a premium price. You openly do not support freedom or the best interest of our kids. You are not the best and you do not aspire to the best, to be the best, or you'd welcome Ed choice. We, the parents, have to make decisions for our children and being stuck here isn't something that we want to do. We should be free to leave and we should be free to take our money wherever we want to go if we disagree with what you guys think is for the best. Because you could be wrong. We all have different decisions and different circumstances in life. And we all need to make personal decisions that are best for our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Gold.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Richardson. I live in Tyler's Valley Drive in Westchester, Ohio. And I just wanted to thank you, especially Mr. Miller, for listening to the medical experts, listening to the physicians, listening to the science and requiring masks in all of our schools. It's important to listen to the experts, not the Google experts that we have been listening to tonight. I really appreciate it. I have two boys in the school. We did BLO last year and, um, it was tough, but they did really well. And I appreciated that option. They are so excited to be back in school in person this year. They have no problems wearing masks. We wear masks when we go to Kroger or we go wherever. It's not a problem. It's not an issue for them. And I know a lot of kids, it's not an issue. They're just so happy to be back in school. They want to stay in school. They don't want to have to quarantine. And I think the masks are the best way to do that and vaccines. Hopefully the younger kids will get those as well soon. But thank you, we support you and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zinc, do we?
Yeah, Deborah Kurtz, she's down in the cafeteria. John Gold and all the people now are in the cafeteria. John Gold. Then we have Erin.
About the Greers.
The, the second part.
No.
Have they switched to the?
They switched to the first part. That's what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're looking for Sonia Greer and Mike Greer and Deborah Kurtz.
Sonia Greer, Mike Greer, Deborah Kurtz.
Can't read the last one. John.
John Gold.
Should we bring up, hm, should we bring up other people?
Hi, my name is Deborah Kurtz. I live at eighty-two, ninety-one Mary Beth Drive. I am the mother of, all my children went to Lakota, two graduates from Lakota East. And I want to say that every child is unique. They all have different needs. I have a child who has sensory integrative dysfunction. It's under the autistic spectrum. Wearing a mask all day is torture. For children who have this, it's like being in a rock concert twenty-four, seven. Bright lights, loud noises, sensory issues, the feels, the tags, wearing a mask all day. That is criminal for these kids. Every child's different. For me, I don't want to say everything, that most everything has already been said that I wanted to say. But one thing I do want to say is one of my children did have COVID-19. So she already has some natural antibodies. Why masking? Why are we masking all the kids? And the masks, they're not helping. This, the hospitals down in Cincinnati, people were getting COVID-19 in their eyes. This mask isn't stopping COVID-19. So I am asking you, I'm demanding to please lift the mask mandate. As the lady that was here earlier spoke, this is terrible. This is criminal to the children. You have children who are committing suicide. My own kids, they were locked up under the lockdown. They couldn't see their friends. And now they're going to school, they can't see their friends either. They're wearing masks, they can't talk, they can't see their facial expressions. It has to end. How long are we going to continue this? Forever? Forever? My son, when he was in the third grade at Hope Bone, he's graduated, he's at Miami University now. I remember in the third grade, we walked into the cafeteria, and most, all the kids were gone. There was only a few kids because of the flu. They all got sick. Viruses are always going to be here. There's no cure for a virus. These vaccines aren't going to stop it. You either had COVID-19, or you're going to get it. You're not going to stop it with masks. So I beg you, I demand, please, to lift the mask mandate. I don't want to go into everything. It's already been said. But for me, I know we all voted. It was a split. You know, make it optional. If you want to send your child with a mask, do so. But if you don't, do not make these kids come to school with masks. Please, I demand you to lift the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gold.
John Gold, or, are we still waiting on the Greers?
Are they at the back there?
They're here. Oh, Greers, you can come forward.
Sonia and Mike Greer.
All right, Greer, I live in 5245 Autumn Oak Drive, Liberty Township, 45044. I just want to take the opportunity and thank you all for letting us all speak. And especially thank you and Mr. Miller for listening to science, making the right decision for my kid and for our kids. I have a middle schooler who's vaccinated and who will wear a mask because I feel the health of this community is on me. There is, right now, in Columbus, in Nationwide Hospital, one kid on ventilator because of COVID-19. One for Lakota, I think is one too many. And I'm willing to take the preventive measures, all of them. In very uncomfortable, as they might seem, is the one thing I can do for those kids that don't have a choice, for those that are immunocompromised, for those that don't know it, but their immune system might not be a good fighter for this virus. I thank you all. I think it's the right decision at this moment. I say that as a mother. I say that as a Christian. And I say that as a healthcare professional. Practicing 27 years now, including school, and wearing a mask for 27 years, which according to some of our speakers here today, I should be terminally ill or dead. So anecdotal information is not really what I know you as board members have to look at, but very critical and real information. I can tell you all my life story, if I had COVID or not. I think that's irrelevant. I think public health is about all of us. I think public health doesn't care about me, or you, or you, or you personally, or how you feel, or how I feel. Public health is concentrating on measures that can improve the outcome for all of us. My outcome could be great, but somebody else's could be really poor. And that is on me and on all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we at Mike Greer? And then John Gold, Adam?
Yes. Mike Greer, 5245 Autumn Oak Drive.
Could you step forward a little bit, Mr. Greer?
Yeah, you can move it up.
I won't take up much of your time. Actually, I was sitting down there, listening to all these people speak. And frankly, I feel kind of like a hypocrite because, you know, I have never been to a school board meeting. I don't even know most of your names, and that's on me. That, you know, that this is the first time I come to a school board meeting. I should have been here long before this. You know, when you're talking about curriculum, when you're talking about major part of your job. So, you know, Wasworth, thank you very much for this mask mandate. Thank you for protecting our kids. Thank you for protecting my kid. I appreciate that. So for Wasworth, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gold? Do we have Mr. Gold, Gold?
Erin Allman, Amy Ragerman. David Albert.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Erin Allman.
You can push that, when you come closer, you can push it down so you can, yes.
Hi. I'm Erin Allman at 5645 Yankee Row. And I just want to say that your guys' decision is unfortunate. Unfortunate that you guys are electing a political appearance versus countless studies of how this affects our kids negatively. It's unfortunate that you snuck in a survey at the busiest time of a parent's thing, getting their kids ready for school, and used that as a reason why you guys have made this decision. It's also unfortunate that you're using the fact that Butler County may change their policies in the future as an excuse to change it now. If that survey is sent out today, I guarantee you, it would be skewed a lot more in the favor of no masks, as is this board meeting today. Everybody down in the public library right now are unmasked, except for a very, very few handful. Facts is, is that we know that masks let droplets out. And you think masking your person up, your other person up, is going to prevent them from getting those masks, those droplets in. You can absorb it through your eyes. Did you know that? You absorb things through your eyes. Those things stay open, and they're not masks. All right? Things that they have proven that have affected kids. They're now saying that the additional bacteria you're breathing in is causing additional cavities, especially to our poor acne. Our kids are getting more acne, which they struggled with. Yeah, immune suppressing. The masks are toxic. I don't know how many people, kids, just put it in their dashboard when they come home, and they sit there and then just throw it with their bookbag and then put it on the next day. You guys heard this from everybody here. This is unreasonable and unnecessary, and it's just for political show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we all know that these masks don't do anything. Heard countless people up here at documents and scientists, actual scientists, stuff, not fake mask stuff.
Sir, could you state your name, please, and your address?
My name's also Erin Allman at 5645 Yankee Row. But, and the thing is, actually, I wanted to speak to the people who are advocating for the masks. What right do you have to enforce your wills upon my decision for my kids? If you want to?
Sir, you need to address the board.
Okay.
Comment and not speak to the audience. It's, your speaking, your public comment is to the board.
Okay. Well, anyway. What if the, what if you guys showed up and or sent that letter out that said, there's no masks allowed? What would some of these people be saying? You know? Would we be screaming, no masks? The same people here, we're fighting for our rights and our freedoms to make this choice ourselves. This is our kids, not yours. We can, we're the ones who make the decisions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, where are we?
Amy Ragerman, David Albert, Brian Garlick. We got about two and a half minutes left.
Are you Mr. Gold?
Yeah, I'm John Gold, finally, right?
Say your name and your address, please.
8281 Paddington Court in Westchester. I want to thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. I know that you guys have tough decisions to make. I have never attended a school board meeting before. Shame on me. I've never felt like I've needed to until now. I've got two kids that are in the district. But I think there's some critical issues, and this being at the top of the list, that we need to address. Like most everybody here, I think it should be a choice that we should be allowed to wear masks or not wear masks. If children want to wear three, if you're the parent who believes that your child should wear a mask, let them wear three masks. I worked for a respirator manufacturer for 15 years, and I'm not a Google scientist. I worked with engineers and doctors, industrial hygienists, so I know a little bit how respirators work. I, with my knowledge, do not have confidence in the masks that my kids would wear to protect against this virus. So I think that it should be our choice. I hear a lot of compelling stories here tonight. I'm four days removed from my best friend's son's funeral, teenage son, who died in a car wreck. But I'm going to go home in a car tonight, and so is everyone else here. We're not here to ban vehicles. So I hope you listen to what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, where are we on time?
About 55 seconds.
Let's, let us, there's one.
Okay, well, I'm Amy Ragerman. I'm at 9705 Timberview Court in Westchester. As a former Lakota East graduate, I want to say that I fully support Lakota's decision to have a mask mandate for all students and staff. This is to protect everyone's health. I have, I have friends who are teachers and parents in this district. I know that we all want to keep as many students in school as possible without having to quarantine for multiple weeks at a time and miss out on learning. And as, you know, someone who's raised by a single mom, I can't imagine what other parents are going through to have to juggle with handling, with dealing with their sick kids. And to me, having, if having a mask mandate is going to prevent, you know, people from being quarantining, I think that is a, a great thing. COVID-19 is not like your typical cold.
I'm sorry, what? That's the end of our 45 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of what questions that have been said tonight, Mr. Miller is getting ready to address in his presentation. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I can do that now, or I can do it under administrative report, whichever you prefer.
I think, um, let's go ahead and do it now.
Okay.
So that we can give them.
Give me just a second here. I'm going to try to address everybody once in terms of some of the things that you brought up, some of the things that that we're trying to deal with, with all this. First of all, sincere thanks for being here. This isn't easy for any of us or any of you, and we get that on either side. So I'm tired of dealing with this, as I know that you're tired of dealing with this, no matter what you think about masks or unmasked. It's also too about quarantines, and how many kids missed school last year because of quarantine. I'm going to talk about that too in a little bit. So I acknowledge and understand the emotional toll that COVID's had on all of us, whether you agree with it or whether you don't. That's an important thing that I just wanted to say. I think we all can agree that none, no one in this room wants this, and we're tired of dealing with it. What was supposed to be, I think several speakers said two weeks, I think it was three weeks at one time, was supposed to be a three-week time period to flatten the curve, has nearly been 18 months of up and down and an ever-evolving saga. So we, we need to, I think, too, also remember where we've been through this with our kids. I know it's hard. A gentleman, I forget the name now, but it's in my book, talked about how he had a kindergartner who lost the last part of the year, just like we all did, but missed out on saying goodbye to friends, closure for teachers, and we could all say that. And then spent last year masked up, and here we are again. I also think too that it's good that we've had opportunities and options for our kids. So we've had that in-person learning all year last year, which many districts can't say. We also have the virtual learning option that a lot of districts, quite frankly, got rid of this summer because they didn't think we were going to need it, but here we are again. So I want to make that acknowledgement, at least we were able to keep that as an option for our families and for our kids. We also need to remember too that Lakota is one of nine school districts that fought back hard on the state and ODH in terms of quarantine, and how much time our kids lost last year when our kids weren't getting sick, to, to an earlier speaker's comment. So we helped knock down that contact rule from six feet to three feet. So we got to, we got to look at the big picture, where we at, where we're at, where we've been, where we're going, and how, how much this has been a roller coaster ride for all of us in terms of trying to get this over with and passed. We all obviously have a lot of different viewpoints, both in this room, downstairs, on the Zoom call, and all across our community. Just a reminder about the number of quarantines and how much time our kids lost last year. First quarter last year, we had 39 positive cases, 802 quarantines, which is about five quarantines per positive case. Second quarter last year, 395 positive cases, 4,438 close contact quarantines. Two weeks of school that those kids missed. I don't want to do that again. Third quarter, 125 positive cases, 175 close contacts. Fourth quarter last year, 380 positive cases, 407 close contacts. It got better when the quarantine guidelines changed. Yes, ma'am. So far, this school year, we're in, we've been in for staggered start. So half the kids Wednesday, half the kids Thursday, everybody in Friday, everybody in today. This is where we're at. Before the school year started, so before the first day of school, we had five positive student cases in one quarantine due to an extracurricular activity. August 18th and 19th, so our first two days of school, staggered start, six positive student cases resulting in one quarantine extra, due to an extracurricular contact. August 20th and today, 13 student cases resulting in 35 quarantines as of 5:45 PM. Take a look at what other school districts are doing, what they're going through, and what they're losing out on right now. Princeton, Loveland, Edgewood, Hamilton City. I got two notifications from superintendents here that one of the schools will be canceling Week Two and Week Three of football because of quarantine. I'm not saying sports rule, it certainly doesn't, but I'm just giving you, those are opportunities that those kids now lost. Let me talk a little bit about the parent survey that went out. Let me talk a little bit about the parent survey that went out. That went out to 25,000 surveyed parents, about 6,800 responses. About half the staff responded. It's also important to note that about 3% of those people that, that responded were unsure. So it essentially was pretty much a dead heat. And we did say, at the time, I said at this table, and I also said when we put out the information to our community, that it was not a vote in terms of it was going to be a decision point, but it was one data point along several data points. So I did want to mention that. So we take a look at the percentage of people that were in favor of masks and what the options were. We also know, and we also put out there, an option for an exemption form. It's actually the same exact form as last year's exemption form with two notable changes. One was the date, and one was we were just curious about who applied last year. As of end of business Friday, and I'm sure this is, there's probably a little bit of uptick since then in terms of how many waiver forms have been submitted. Early childhood schools, 51. Elementary schools, 37. Junior high, 13. High schools, 18. For a total of 119 exemption forms, or 0.68% of our student body. That's how many people have turned in exemption forms. Depending on who you believe or what you're following, the Delta variant is worse than what the COVID we were dealing with last year. Our decision last year was to follow UC Health and Children's Hospital. I also reached out to UC Health and Children's Hospital this summer. We also heard from a lot of the pediatricians and doctors, not just in Butler County, but also in the greater Cincinnati region, which in my opinion has more weight than, you know, different things that you can find online, no matter what side you believe, believe in. So it really comes down to two options. And I have a quick video we're going to show in just a few minutes. It really isn't so much about the masks, it is. And I get that it's hard to wear a mask all day for our kids, and I get that there are issues with that. But if our kids are quarantined and put out, there's also issues with that at home. And they're going to be home for a while. So that's an issue as well. That's an issue for parents that have to work. That's a community issue. It's an economic issue, and I get that. So if we mask up and we're keeping our kids in school, there's less quarantines, less school time missed, less student activities postponed or canceled. Again, take a look at the other schools around us and what they're missing out on. It's mask optional, the path of those quarantines goes from three feet to six feet. That's not my rule, that's not a Lakota rule, that's Ohio Department of Health rule. So if we go with that, the uptick in quarantine numbers gets a lot higher. Our mission is not to decide on masks or no masks, our mission is to keep kids in school for as long as we can. There are some schools that have an uptick in COVID. Take a look at the southern states where they have a high positivity rate of COVID that are already going to remote learning. I don't want to do that. Our sort of mission critical too is to limit and mitigate the loss of classroom time, co-curriculars, and extracurricular activities for our kids. And as a reminder too, and somebody mentioned it earlier tonight, masking is for inside activities. We played football Friday at East, kids weren't wearing a mask because it's only an inside rule. And so it says inside activities. So if we're outside, we're okay. We plan on still having homecoming at West Friday night, it's going to be outside. Those are creating different opportunities for our kids that we normally might not be able to have. And again, the mask issue is not intended to be all year long or even long term. We'll gauge the numbers and see what we have. But we have to make decisions based on what we actually see and what the positive cases are and following the quarantine and guidelines. Again, I encourage you to take a look at our neighbors in Butler County, southwest Ohio, and see what issues they're dealing with, with things that our kids are missing out on. And I get, I mentioned too about the younger kids and the kindergarten experience and first grade experience and now second grade experience, and I get that. And also, those of you that have older kids, our kids that were seniors missed out on a lot in 2020. We had Elite Eight going to basketball, done, never going to get that chance. Better numbers remain low and that we can shift from mandating masks into strongly recommend at some point. I want to show a video, a quick video, that the communications team talked about in terms of what's important in terms of quarantine and not, and how much of an impact it could have on our kids. So I'm going to leave it to them to throw that up there. It's not too long.
At Lakota Local School, we believe that students learn best when they are in school. But COVID-19 has clearly threatened our ability to do that, without masks at least. Last year, we averaged over 560 student quarantines per week between November and December. Quarantined students cannot come to school. That adds up to a loss of learning and, worse yet, a negative impact on our students' mental health from not being able to be around their peers. Last spring, the Ohio Department of Health and our local health department changed quarantine protocols for schools. If everyone wore masks in a classroom, students didn't have to quarantine if at least three feet apart. As a result, between mid-March and mid-May, the number of quarantined students from school dropped to an average of just 14 students per week. Let us be clear, COVID-19 is still here, and Lakota must follow our health department's protocols. So what can we do to help keep our students in school? In a classroom, if everyone is wearing a mask, close contacts are within three feet of the COVID-positive person. That distance grows to six feet if someone isn't wearing a mask. Under these protocols, here's one way it could play out for our kids. If one student tests positive for COVID-19, every single unmasked and unvaccinated close contact has to quarantine. Come October, because of House Bill 244, every unmasked close contact will have to quarantine, regardless of vaccination status. Even masked students will have to quarantine if the positive person is unmasked. In this scenario, that one unmasked student testing positive for COVID-19 can impact an entire school. That could potentially equate to nearly 3,000 hours of instruction lost for one COVID-positive student, all because one student didn't wear a mask. The picture is very different when everyone wears masks while indoors at school. In that same scenario, only the individual who tested positive for COVID-19 will miss school. Our health department says all others can remain in school if they were wearing masks consistently and properly. Look at the difference. In other words, doing what we have to do as a school community and wearing masks can save nearly 3,000 hours of lost instructional time per COVID case. We are experts in education, not health and safety. For that, we turn to medical experts and our health department. Their message is clear. Masks work to protect our students from COVID-19 and help them avoid quarantine. And by requiring masks for all, we're doing what we have to do to keep our kids where they need to be in school learning. This kind of outcome simply is not possible without the partnership of our parents and families. Thank you for doing your part to keep our doors open and our students learning in school.
We don't dictate quarantines, that's not our job as a school district, it's not what the health department lets us do. So I don't have a choice for when we're quarantining or not quarantining, so I just want to make that clear. Any questions?
So the quarantine rules changed again this year from last spring?
Correct. So it's three feet now, yeah, if you're, if everybody's masked up.
Okay. So that significantly decreased the required quarantines if everyone is masked in the classroom?
Correct.
So it's, so the student in the elementary class, let's just use that as an example, is COVID-positive, but everybody's masked, only the student that's COVID-positive must quarantine.
Correct. So, yes. Subject to change. Yes.
What I heard in there was consistently and properly masked. How is that monitored?
I'm sorry?
How is that monitored?
How is what?
That students are consistently and properly masked, that was the term that sounded like it came out of the protocol guidelines. How is that monitored? Is that our responsibility or is that the health department?
In terms of proper mask wearing, would probably fall on the teacher and the staff, and we did it last year for most kids.
That seems like a burden for our staff, that I'm not sure about the enforceability for that.
I haven't heard that as a burden for our staff, but I'm sure that it is. And they didn't sign up for this either.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
No, I just said they didn't sign up for this either, and I'm sure that it is a burden to them.
I'm positive of that. What about the enforceability of the Butler County Health Department's quarantines? Because as I understand it, they strongly recommend it, but they did not mandate masks, is that correct?
They're not allowed to mandate masks. They don't mandate masks.
They just got the quarantine guidelines?
Correct.
From them?
We get the quarantine guidelines from them, they have to enforce the quarantine, not us.
But they strongly recommended masks, is that correct?
They did, they won't, they won't recommend. Correct.
So we took, we took it a step further then.
Yes.
So do we, do you have any questions, Michael, Brad, Julie? Okay, we're going to jump back up to, where were we? To our board updates. Julie, do you have a Butler Tech board update?
Um, yes, I do. So during our Butler Tech meeting, we did an update on the strategic plan, of which there are five pillars to the Butler Tech strategic plan. Student achievement, reaching the greatest number of students, sharing financial stability, stakeholder engagement, and collective efficacy. So just a couple highlights on that. The number of students that were reached in the 2021 school year were 17,822 students through both the high school program and the adult education program, and I will make a copy of this report for you, so you can have that. They also did 116,987 direct mail initiatives to current and potential students. So they really increased their mailing and marketing pieces, and they do a great job of being able to see, like, through all of their Google contacts and where they're getting the most bang for their buck on any of the marketing pieces that they do. As far as capital investments, there was a $5 million capital investment, and we've talked a lot about the Natural Science Center, we know that we've started that investment. They had a 94% employee retention rate with 344 full-time employees and 20 new employees, excuse me. So that was a success. One area that declined a little bit was the adult education piece. They, the number of adults that enrolled in their adult education piece went down a little bit, but they said that that typically does flow with the labor market. So as we've seen an uptick in the labor market, where fewer people are needing to be retrained, they typically see fewer people enrolling in those programs. So that's pretty cyclical and typical, but they are going to make an effort to try to increase those numbers, to still try to get people certified and retrained in different areas. So, and I actually have a video, cue the video, talking a little bit about some of the success that some of their students have had in the adult education program.
I am a three-time college dropout. I felt like the teachers were there to clock in and clock out, so I left, I didn't do it.
I was a corrections officer for two years, and I decided that wasn't the life for me.
I'm just a caregiver by nature, and I feel like that's the path I need to take in life, so.
At first, my age stood in the way. I was 30, learning something new, going completely outside of my comfort zone.
Being able to help people who need it, I think, is the biggest thing.
God, I just knew as a kid, I knew I wanted to do this. And you have that passion, and you just know that you have a desire to do something better.
And I wanted to do something different. I'm a guy here, I had an amazing adventure.
It's challenging, yes. A lot of our students are adults with kids at home, multiple kids at home.
It's not the easiest thing, but if you feel that that's the path you need to take and you need more fulfillment in your life, well, take those steps. Butler Tech has really made me feel like they're setting me up for success.
I really love my teachers. They're very understanding, you can ask them so many questions. And everybody had their own stories, you know, everybody had their own jobs, their own failures or success with college. I liked that a lot. It felt real.
I regret stepping out there, going back to school as an adult. To me, it's worth it, it changed your life.
The support in us working as a team pushed me to get through and make it this far.
That was like the biggest accomplishment, I feel like. The end goal was larger than I expected.
So, again, there's a lot of great opportunities there. I mean, if you just look at the CDL licensing itself, there's such demand right now for CDL drivers, and you can get a job before you graduate, basically. So if anybody needs any retraining in any adult ed, there's great opportunities. And again, our all-boards meeting, I just passed out the Butler Tech newsletter, the date is on the back, September 28th is the all-boards meeting. So if you could mark that on your calendar, we'll be celebrating the all-boards meeting and sharing student success that day. So, any questions?
Any questions from Mrs. Schaefer on Butler Tech? Legislative, Mr. Miller and Ms. Logan?
The only thing I had to mention was with Paula Di Maria's retirement as the superintendent, state superintendent, they're now on their second interim effect, that I believe earlier today, Stephanie Sidens is now the interim superintendent, effective September 25th. So, wanted to point that out. And my BASSA legislative meeting is not happening this month just because of the beginning of school year.
Mrs. Logan, do you have any?
I actually have a legislative committee meeting in the morning, so we'll be updated on that. The only thing I wanted to mention, which really isn't legislation, but it's rules between the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor of State around the five-year forecast. And one of the things that they're doing, they, they look at all those rules every so often, and they're reviewing those, and I'm on a subgroup that's looking at those to try to come up with where we go from here. One of the things that they are recommending, because right now currently, boards of education do not have to approve five-year forecast. We have always done it that way, but that will be, that has been something that has been proposed as one of the changes, that all boards of educations would have to approve their five-year forecast. So that's all I have right now.
We do that already, so.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor, do you have anything? I do, thank you. That makes no logical sense to me when we have oversight of the budget that we would not approve the five-year forecast, so I'm not sure why that would have been missed in legislation. Just a few things, obviously, at the federal and the state level, they are on summer recess, just wrapping that up, and they will be back very shortly, and I expect some hot and heavy legislation to be coming forward. We'll be paying close attention to that. Just a reminder that the OSBA Fall Conference is coming up, and that is, I believe, October 17th, and the Capitol Conference is November 7th through the night. Make sure calendars are marked for that. That's all I have for today.
Great. Does anybody else have any legislative? Mr. Miller, do you have anything else in your administrative report?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. New business, does anybody have any new business?
I guess I still have some questions on the administrative report. How are we looking with class sizes in all of the buildings, and how is that aspect of our back-to-school going?
Thanks for the question. We had some late in release, so a little tight in a couple buildings right now that we're hopefully, hoping will settle soon. I can think, hope, off the top of my head, has an issue, early childhood, I believe, first grade. And then we have a couple other buildings where we're probably at, in some of the elementary schools in third grade, I think we're sitting at 27 and 28, which is a little higher than what we would like. But we still, with just being in school four days, still going to wait a little while to make any shifts or changes. So it just seems like towards the end, right before school starts, we got, we got a huge rush, which is not uncommon.
What kind of timeframe do you have for looking at that?
I would say probably, usually Labor Day is usually a good point in time if we need to adjust any staff.
Any other questions? Any new business?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Miller, put you on the spot. I mean, we did welcome back nearly 17,000 students over the course of the last four days. Any highlights or anything you want to share? Talk a little bit about the transition coming in.
Yeah, that's a good point, and maybe you should have focused on that a little bit more tonight, but for sake of time, what have you, but it's always nice, and especially this year, to see the kids back. And it seems like your first day of school, excitement was even more so this year, and it seemed like our kids, most of them, got back in the flow pretty quick, and we're happy to see each other. And so we know we can make it work and make it happen, but again, it's different and hopefully better than last year.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that.
True.
The two-day transition received as a positive again?
Yeah, we did that last year in terms of a staggered start and a phase-in for our kids, and there are a lot of good positives from both staff, parents, and kids too, like that initial push-in. So I think it worked out pretty well, and we do a little bit different for kindergarten too. And so in the past, we had done more of a spring kind of check-in on our kids that were coming into kindergarten, and we're shifting that now towards the beginning of the school year, which makes more sense, because a lot of development can happen in those months over the summer.
Any other questions? Okay, we come to the part with our board action items, we need a motion to approve A and B.
Mrs. Casper, may I speak for a moment before we do that?
Yes, you may.
I would like to suggest a different motion for this, and that would be a motion to return to the strong recommendation to mask as opposed to the mandatory mask requirement.
Mrs. Logan, what's the best way to handle that? We vote, how do we?
It would need to be a second.
It should maybe be on B and not A.
So...
can you repeat your motion again?
I would like to make a motion to return to the strong recommendation to mask and move away from the mandatory mask requirement.
Do we have a second?
Versus what, voting on what's on the agenda?
So, yeah. For lack of a second, the motion dies and we will vote on the, what's on the actual agenda.
And would you, would you separate A and B, please?
Sure. I need a motion for Board Action Item A, the approval of the return to school safety protocol.
Second. Or sorry, my motion.
I need the motion. Then now I need a second. Second.
And that does not include the masking mandate?
Correct, just pulling out A.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. Mrs. Logan, will you follow the rule?
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. I need a motion to ratify superintendent plan to mandate mask K twelve for students and staff. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Logan, when you're.
I would like to ask to amend that motion. And I would like to ask that the motion, that the mandate to mask would be ratified only until September twenty-seventh. That would be thirty days of school. We'd have the opportunity to look at the data, to understand how many cases we're actually seeing. And is there a basis in actual fact for the mask mandate? So I would ask that we ratify for thirty days until the next board, or until the second board meeting in September. And then we'll reconsider and look at what the actual data is.
So moved.
Is that, do we have?
Do I? Sorry.
So she made the motion to amend it, so you would second.
Thank you. A discussion on the motion?
If we do that, I just got a question. How would that?
How's that gonna work?
How that, how, how does that work? What are we looking at to base that decision?
I have the same question.
We would only put the mask mandate in place for thirty days. And then we have actual data, we can look at local data, we can look at actual hospitalizations, actual cases, and have this discussion again so that we're actually basing it on factual data.
Where is our, um, when is our board meeting?
I, September twenty-seventh.
So there should not be a lapse in between that we run into the same thing we've run into right now.
Say that again. Kelly, say that one more time.
So the next meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Two meetings in, the second meeting in September is the twenty-seventh.
But if we just passed it as is, couldn't we still then, at that time, if we needed to revisit it, revisit it at that time while still passing it as it is stated on the agenda currently?
You know, one of the. My understanding is we're going to revisit it anyway.
Yeah.
And that gives the superintendent the right to revisit at a future date if it's passed as is versus.
Yeah, I have a couple of clarifying questions.
Okay.
And so I guess one of those would be, and this is not to give false hope to anybody, I'm just saying in the grand scheme of things and what ifs, that I don't, if, if we do make a change from mandate to highly recommend and the data is coming in and our numbers are low, I don't want to wait till the twenty-seventh to make a change. And I think you gave, already have, I already have the ability to make that happen under um eighty-four fifty point zero one. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but.
No later than September seventh.
Yeah. The other thing would be um, it would be really hard, not hard, not un, undoable, but there's also a question in my head about if at that board meeting on the twenty-seventh, if, if that's another decision point, are we gonna make the call that night and then the next day it's different? I mean, uh, that seems a little maybe, you know, maybe it's a little bit different.
My heart behind the second was that we just make a statement and that this isn't going to keep going on, right? There's going to be a certain point in time that we revisit. I also fully recognize that you have the authority to be able to make that decision and we back that decision up, right?
Yeah.
And be able to go back and forth. And so I would, I guess, take your recommendation on how you believe that is best suited.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could um.
There would have to be a decision that night then on the twenty-seventh.
And that, that's okay. Or we could say like, we can make a decision that night and then say, but effective October first or something, you know? Doesn't that, just massage it a little bit. Um we have a board meeting between now and then, correct?
Mm-hmm, we have one before.
We can get some clarification. I can maybe get some, might, what might be decision points on data points along the way between now and the September whatever meeting.
Twenty-seven.
Another one before that.
Yeah, I know which one you meant.
I don't know if I'm clear enough on that, but I'm just.
Any other questions?
Questions, but I think an expression of, one of the things that I heard a lot from our parents tonight was the word hope. And that they want to know that there's hope somewhere in this process, that we're going to move forward and we're going to move past this. And there were a lot of comments tonight that really resonated with me. And I think putting an end date on this is when we expect to make a decision. And I do believe it is our decision. I don't think we pass it to Matt. I appreciate you stepping in front of the bus, Matt, but I don't think it should be your responsibility to do that on something that we as community representatives make and need to make the decision on.
Sure.
This is, we own this one.
Well, what I'm saying is that he has the authority in the absence of a meeting, like what happened.
To get to this point.
To get to this point. So he has the, the ability per our policy to make that decision. I am happy to weigh in on that and, and take a vote. I'm just saying that he has the ability to do that if it comes to that before the twenty-seventh.
Right.
I would be happy for you to move to a strong recommendation to mask prior to that meeting. We completely support that.
The way this is going, you never know. But as I'm sitting here, I'm getting more indications from other districts that are having issues right now, so I'm hoping we stay out of the fray. So there is no clear path.
There's absolutely not a clear path, but I still move toward parent choice in the process.
Understood.
I think our parents need to be able to make decisions for their children's health. And we have moved away from that. And there's, I've got two pages worth of comments that I'm sure you all have probably heard enough tonight, but I feel really strongly that we've moved away from where we needed to be on this issue.
But we've also said that we would listen to the Butler County Health Department and Children's Hospital and UC Health. And that's what Matt has followed. And that's what he has said he's going to follow. And he, he has followed their advice and that's what he made the decision based on. So we also need to honor that and support that decision.
And remember that it's, we've not dealt with this before, ever, a pandemic of this nature in any of our lifetimes. So.
I, I think, Kelly, that actually raises a very good point. We have been looking at this as something that if we just do this, we mask for a little longer, we do mitigating strategies, we just keep doing this and this and this, we're going to move past this. And frankly, I think we need to shift our thinking completely and stop this roller coaster that we have our parents and our staff, our families on. And I think we need to consider, how do we deal with other serious public health issues? Like we have flu in a building. We have a serious outbreak. We've got twenty percent absenteeism on our staff and our students. What do we do? We might shut that building down for, for two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
We have not developed that ongoing strategy or protocols. If we have to live with this as opposed, as opposed to moving past it, how do we do that? And that's the conversation I think we should be having instead of this up and down of mask or not mask or whatever it is. And maybe that's a decision we should be making for ourselves as a district and not waiting for somebody else to impose it.
Well, the, the issue about um twenty percent, that's always been the case. So for kids or staff absentee rate was twenty percent in the building, no matter what the issue was, that building would close. That's not, that's not, that's already a decision point. It's already been made.
But we're not treating COVID the same way.
Right. But again, we're educators, we're not the health experts.
We're listening to the public health expert, cause that's, so.
And I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep.
Public health experts have changed their opinions multiple times.
I'm trying to keep extracurriculars going.
Please.
I'm trying to keep extracurriculars going. I'm trying to keep opportunities for kids going. And uh those things, the quarantine issue is out of my hands, out of your hands. So I'm trying to maintain opportunities for kids. And if, and some of us around, a, around Lakota, other districts are not having those opportunities anymore for their kids. So there's a cost to that too. I get it.
Matt, I support the effort to keep kids in school. I still believe that it's a parent's decision and the parents are the ones who ultimately are going to deal with the consequences of those decisions, whether it's illness or it's quarantine at home or whatever it is. Our parents and guardians are the ones who deal with those.
Sure.
And so that decision ultimately, in my mind, belongs with our parents.
The five hundred and sixty kids that were quarantined last year for twenty-one days, it's our responsibility to now catch them up because they miss twenty-one days of school. So by trying to keep them in school every day, it does become our responsibility. I understand your point. I do.
And to the point earlier about masking, monitoring masking being a burden on our staff, if you want to talk about a burden, talk about maintaining kids that are quarantined and trying to keep their learning up throughout, also teaching in person. It's an extreme burden. Um, you know, I, I am, I obviously second the motion. I am obviously in favor of having conversations down the line about um ongoing um face coverings for our students. Um at the same right, I also one hundred percent fully um support Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan as they manage and lead our district, district day to day. Um I, you know, it's, it's we've received a lot of emails. You know, it's interesting. I'm gonna take a step back. You know, we, this is uh my fourth year on the board. Some of you have served way longer. Um and I'm sure, I mean, you all have seen very hot topics as you navigated five levy failures, budget cuts and you know, a lot, I'm sure. In four years, um you know, this is by far the most emails we've ever received. And then to the point that the gentleman stepped up earlier and said, I should come to board meetings. You know, we, you kind of laughed. You know, a year and a half, two years ago, because we'd have like two people come to our meetings ever. We represent, we, we collectively are elected to represent a hundred thousand people in this, in our communities and we represent seventeen thousand students. We proudly do that. We're elected. Um we, you know, we get a small stipend, but this is really a volunteer job. Um all of us up here, we've said it before and I'll say it again, you know, we all, we all are connected to this community in very different ways, which was makes this board very special. We can disagree, we can see things from a different perspective, but the reality is we all represent a different voice in our community. Um when I saw those emails come in, thousands of emails, now granted, a lot of them were form email that just popped through. Um if I sorted them out, they'd be fifty-fifty, just like our survey. And so while I, you can disagree with that, that's fine. Absolutely. Um you can disagree. But I mean, the emails that came through are fifty-fifty. Now, do I know, do I think that's fifty-fifty in the community? I don't know. But our role and responsibility here, I believe to be, is that we um as an elected board, listen to those that are making recommendations that are in the field of science to help us make decisions. Again, you can disagree with us. The point being, and the point I'm going to make, and I just want to share because I, you know, again, I recognize whatever comes out of my mouth is going to be hated by fifty percent and loved by fifty percent. So it is what it is, right? Um our core competency, the core competency of this district, the core competency is to educate children. And we can have lots of conversations around educating children and what that means. And is that the whole child, is that academic, whatever it may be. But the job is, when they come through our doors, we educate that child. We cannot educate a child if they're not in our care, custody and control. It's, it's just really, it's, that's, we can't do it. Now, we have VLO and we're working towards VLO really hard to make that as robust as we can. And we have phenomenal teachers that are doing it. But point being, we cannot educate, we cannot do our core business. These two folks over here, Mrs. Logan and Mr. Miller, who we recognize are the best. They're the best. We know this. They can't do their job leading a team and leading our teachers if the kids aren't here. I say that because again, if, if our core competency is educating our children and that's what we have to do, and we can't do it if they're not here. And we recognize the fact, just like that video, that the public health officials have said, if you're wearing a mask, you don't have to quarantine. Then that's what I believe we need to do. Again, I can disagree with that. I've got a child in the schools. Do you think she wants to wear a mask every day? No. But can I take off work to be home with her? No, I can't. Would I love to be able to? Yes, but I can't if she's quarantined and she's not going to be getting educated. It's complicated. And I understand frustration. I completely understand frustration. I know, you're shaking your head and you're saying I don't. I do. I do. I'm a human being, just like all of us. We care about this place where we wouldn't have given up four, eight, twelve, sixteen years of our lives to make this the best district in the state of Ohio. So I just say to you, because I, I had a moment, and I'm saying all this because you guys know I talk, so I'll be done in a second. Here's the thing, here's the thing. I went to my daughter's open house. My daughter loves life, loves school. She'll care, again, mask, whatever. She, she just, she has been looking forward to going back to school since the last day of school. All someone, who's her teacher gonna be? Do you know a teacher? And when we find out in the hack who the teacher is, we're calling everybody. Who's? All those fun things. Go to open house. She's thrilled to death, right? Meets her teacher, meets her friends. Like, I just see this smile. I'm walking out and I get verbally attacked by somebody walking down the sidewalk. Because I am a horrible human being. They told me to my faces, my daughter's standing there, she's looking at me wondering why this is going on, right? Like, has no idea, like, because again, it's not her burden to bear. I think somebody said that. All I'm saying is that we love this community and we're serving and we're doing the very best we can. And we can disagree. When Mr. Miller came four years ago, he brought this hashtag, which I think at that time, I don't even know what hashtags were. I'm not really. Anyways, he comes, he's like, oh, hashtag, we are Lakota. I'm like, what the heck does we are Lakota mean? And he was very clear, right? He said, look, one thing I've noticed when I come into this district is that there's less, Westchester and Liberty Township, Lakota is the unifying factor, right? We are Lakota, west, capital W, east, capital E. We're together. I've lived here my entire life. I've said this over and over and I know people roll my eyes at me. Born here, raised here, been forty-one years here. My kids go here, my siblings have gone here, my wife works here. I worked in the district. My parents were both employees. I love this place. We're not trying to be divisive. What we're trying to do is keep our kids in school, in seats so we can make a positive impact on their lives and they can learn. Do I want the masks to go away? Yes, I do, one hundred percent. But right now, ODH and the Ohio Department of Education have put forth quarantine guidelines that we have to follow, whether or not you believe we do or not, we have to follow. And in order to do that, it means we have to have a mask on our kids until they release that guidance. And so we need to come together as a community, love our schools and do things that are proactive so we can get our leaders back to the job that they need to be doing and educating our kids and increasing the curriculum. I'm done. So all that to say, I'm happy, I second the motion still and, but I want to give Mr. Miller authority and make a decision.
I'm gonna chime in and I'll, I'll try to be quick. Um and I don't know where we stand on, on, on Linda's motion as of yet, but, and I'm, I'm fine with it if, if we need to have this conversation again and review it, but I'm also fine with, with Mr. Miller uh making a decision when, when he gets the reports and he's good about keeping us informed and letting us know what he's thinking about and considering. Um but like Brad, just probably more eloquently than I can, I can say the, the, the issue for me isn't, um it is safety, but it's more about staying in school. Um we, we want to keep kids in school. Um and for me, it's not about funding, it's not about registration, it's, it's not about um, you know, we're not trying to harm or punish anybody. Nobody likes the mask. Um, you know, we, where I work, we try to decorate them and make them cute for the kids and, and that lasts about a week. Um because nobody wants to wear them. Um on another note, I'll say um, and this was in another district, this is, I, I work the south of here in a, in a district um and, and it where it was, it was coming up about what, what they were, what they were gonna do with masks. And um the community where I work serves a lot of um single-parent moms. And I was at a gas station in that same neighborhood and I ran into one of the moms who kid, whose kid comes to my facility, um a rec center. And again, it's not this community, so I'm not trying to exaggerate or, or make, but I'm making a point that we do have a contingent of our community that, that falls in the same category. Um and the single mom was saying, you know, asking what we were gonna do. And during that time, you, you know, Mr. Miller's really pushing, trying to, you know, he was trying to make it so that we wouldn't have to be masked. But obviously things changed, numbers went up, quarantine, you know, issues occurred and all that, so he had to make that decision. But this mom was saying how, how nervous she was that if her school didn't mask and her kid had to quarantine, that's the last time this happened. And her kid had quarantine, she lost her job. And losing a job was rough on her and that family. Um now she has a job. And if they quarantine again, she may lose her job again. And losing a job was rough on her and that family. Um, now she has a job, and if they quarantine again, she may lose her job again. And just the turmoil that that puts on a family. Again, thi- this was in a di- different community, but we do have families that can relate to that. Um, many folks in our community, it's, it's a mom and dad, and maybe we can alternate. There's grandma down the street, maybe there's neighbors. We can rather, but not everybody has that, 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 um, that blessing. And so it, it's those folks that I think about too, when we talk about, you know, having to quarantine a great amount of kids, and there's just the pressure and the burden that puts on other families. So for me, in supporting Matt's decision and, and continuing with it until things change, um, I, 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 I think we want to keep kids in school. We want to keep them safe. We want to educate them um the best we can, and we, we, we educate them better when they're in school. So again, I, I don't know where we are with, with Linda's motion, but, you know, I'm fine with.
I think we're ready to call a vote. Actually, I'm, still have something to say if I could. You know, part of what I struggle with, with the mandatory masking, and we heard this over and over again tonight, was the fact that we look at masking as being benign as opposed to a viral illness. And I think we've heard over and over again from our parents, we've heard anecdotal data from parents and from students, that indicating that it's not harmless for all students. There are mental health issues that are involved. God help us all that there are children who are losing their lives. A rate of suicide is increasing. Mrs. White, I heard you, and I'm sorry for your family's pain. The negative consequences, though, for children are something we aren't even talking about. How do we mitigate the negative cons- consequences of masking? How are we measuring that? I don't hear us having any discussion about that. We're just assuming that this side's okay, and this is not. And frankly, it's, I, I said at our last meeting, I think that there is no one answer that we will come up with that's going to be right for every individual student. There isn't. But that is why I fall back on, I believe, parents who have to deal with those consequences should have a choice for their student. Because we don't know enough about each student to know what's right for them. And I'll leave it there and just say, where the motion stands is an amendment asking that this is ratified until September twenty-seventh, at which point it would need to be ratified by the board again, hopefully with some more facts and data to support actually putting this into place.
Can I just address something that you said?
You can, but then I'll have to respond back to you.
I know. I take a little bit of exception that, that we're not thinking of the mental health issues that our kids are going through wearing masks. So you said that, I'm going to respond to it.
I said masking negative consequences.
But you, you mentioned mental health too, I, I believe, so.
And we are addressing mental health issues. I'm specifically talking about masking's role in that.
Yeah, and, and I get that. The other, the other avenue, a- as you know, would be the, would be the opt-out form that our parents, some of our parents have chosen to take, some of them mentioned it tonight. So it's not that we don't believe that there are kids that can't for a variety of reasons, and we're trying to be very um receptive to that and very accommodating when those things come up.
Appreciate that.
Just wanted to mention that.
And, and I would also like to add, I think when the decision has been made, and again, it, it would, in an ideal world, every parent can have their own autonomy, and that doesn't impact another parent's autonomy. But in this decision, when one child, because of a parent's decision, can bring in COVID unmasked, it impacts another child and whether or not they get COVID potentially. So it does impact another child and another family, and whether or not then that parent has to be out of work because now they have COVID, and so it does have an impact on another family. So there, it, we aren't operating in individual biomes. We are operating together, and so it does have an impact. And then I also think, again, we're relying on Children's Hospital and their advice. I believe Children's Hospital has looked at and weighed all aspects. So they're looking at masking and looking at the mental health aspect of that, as well as the physical health aspect when they're making that recommendation. I don't believe that they are making that in a singular sector. They're looking and balancing all those factors and making that best recommendation when they tell us you need to mask and make that recommendation.
And I'm not making an assumption that they're considering all sides of that. But I also think there's a conversation to continue to have about the efficacy and effectiveness of masking. Is a cloth mask the same as a surgical mask? Do we really believe that stops the transmission? We can continue the conversation. And I think we heard a lot of conversation tonight, discussion. I am sure that the rest of you have, as I have, put a tremendous amount of time into reading the things that have been sent to us, into doing our own research, into understanding as much as we possibly can around the issues. And I have grave questions about the efficacy of masking. And if we believe masking stops transmission, then why are we not mandating the type masking? I mean, there's, there's some other places to go with this, but that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking us to give parents and families and staff some hope that there is an end to this somewhere in sight, and we actually base it on data, local data, not national issues, but local data saying, here's what's happening here. And I think that's.
That's the data that I'm using.
That's, well, that's what's.
If you go to Children's website, you can see the panel discussions that have been going on for months, that I've participated in every single one of those, except for one where Mr. Wilkman covered for me. Um, I think that would be helpful if you, if you go on their website and take a look at the.
And I have done that, Matt, and I appreciate it. And I know their hospitalizations are looking at forty percent for COVID, and a large portion of the rest of it is for R S V, so it's not necessarily COVID-related hospitalizations.
Correct. You're right. It is forty right now in R S V, and, and there was something else that is showing an uptick, and also the general hospitals in our area have been told to prepare for younger patients because children is going to be full, not just COVID, to your point, but that's an issue that they're scrambling to deal with now. So when you talk about local, I don't, we can't really get any more local, in my opinion, than Children's Hospital.
So there's a lot to sort through there.
Okay, we're gonna.
Sure.
Right now, we are going to vote on the motion. Are you ready?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll?
Yes, and this is for the amendment um to ratify the superintendent's mandate until September twenty-seventh, and then you would review it again.
To review it on September twenty.
It's not going to amend it.
Right, right.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
And now you need to vote on the amended motion. Sorry, that's.
Okay, Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Uh, treasurer's recommendations, A and B. Mrs. Logan, do you have anything you'd like to say about those?
No, they're um, the, the typical stuff that is usually on the agenda. Um, but you see June and July for this one, because the last board meeting, um, we did not have the financial reports on there, so they're grouped together.
Right. Can I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Um, I need a motion for superintendent's recommendations, A through D. Mr. Miller, do you have anything you need to say about those?
Just briefly on C with Butler County E S C preschool contracts similar than past years. We had talked a couple of years ago, probably by now, of taking everything over. Uh, we're just not ready for that, not prepared for that yet, so we're going to still stick with the E S C. But we do have oversight on the administrative staff and support services, and that's, it's basically the same as what it was this past year. Now, and D is an M O U to acknowledge the nurses that are putting some extra time on quarantine and all things related to COVID.
Is there any discussion? Uh, first, I need a motion. Did I already get a motion?
I have a motion. I'll make a motion. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions?
Mr. Miller, is there an increase in our cost, or is it the same for the preschool contract with the E S C?
I believe it's the same.
The increase in cost would be the increase in the wages. Their employees did receive an increase, and I believe it's, I would have to look, but I, I want to say three percent, but that increase would be placed on there.
Correct.
So can you put that into a dollar amount, what that increase is?
I don't have it with me, but I can absolutely follow up with you on that. Um, the other pace, place where we are saving a little bit of money, last year, our assistant director was a hundred percent preschool, and this year, we're sharing that position with one of our early childhoods.
Yep.
So.
So we took a position.
For halftime F T E instead of full time.
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions? Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Uh, we have reached the second part of our public comment, and we do have a couple of people who have signed up to speak at the second public comment. Mr. Zing?
Dresden Souls. Alex Argo. Suzanne Bruce.
Um, Dresden Souls Peters, Anderson Drive, Anderson Drive, Liberty Township. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I recently attended my son's open house, Independence Elementary School. It was wonderful to be able to walk around his new school and see how different it is from Wyandotte. He's excited to be at the big kids' school. I didn't explain to him that there are several more big schools to come. Around that, he was very excited to visit was the art room. Apparently, according to him, big kids' schools get to do better art projects. When we visited, when we visit my parents, he loves looking at the things I made when I was his age. He asked the new art teacher about clay. It's his favorite of my projects, is a mirror frame that I made out of clay when I was nine. He was very upset to learn that the kiln is broken and has been broken for some time, which means that the students haven't been getting to work with clay. What would it take to repair or buy a new kiln? Are other schools in our district also without a kiln as well? We understand that clay is currently off the table because of sanitization difficulties, but my son and I would love to see the independent elementary schools' kiln fixed or replaced, and clay work an option in the future. Thank you.
You said independent, independent?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know, find out.
Lori Root, also.
Uh, my name's Alex Argo, uh, six-three-three-five, Coach House Way. Um, uh, just briefly, I know you, you guys uh didn't sign up to be public health officials, uh, but Senate Bill twenty-two didn't give you much of a choice, and I wanted to briefly thank Mr. Miller and the board uh for uh listening to the private and public health experts in our community and putting health and safety of our children and our community first, and also for keeping our children in school as best you can. Um, but I did want to address uh kind of a common theme um at some of our recent board meetings, uh, which is the kind of barrage of people who've been coming to, to speak about the supposed teaching of critical race theory in our schools. Uh, critical race theory is a term that was coined in the seventies and developed in the eighties and mostly taught in law school settings. It's not taught in K to twelve schools, um, but if we have teachers here at Lakota with classes where students are having intelligent conversations on graduate level topics, I think those teachers probably deserve a raise. Instead, people have been using CRT as a catch-all dirty word for things that they don't like or want to talk about, or maybe, maybe they just aren't fully informed on what they are. They say culturally, culturally responsive teaching, anti-racism, diversity, equity, inclusion, and even social and emotional learning are all code words for CRT. They say it's divisive. It sure seems kind of like a scare tactic to stifle discussions and scare teachers from touching on it's remotely sensitive topics in their classrooms. I just wanted to thank the board and the district for all their efforts in these areas, and ask that those that are concerned, excuse me, ask those that are concerned about critical race theory to maybe ask why this suddenly has only become an issue in the last six months or so, when critical race theory has been around for over forty years. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Bruce?
Angela Oswald.
Hi, um, Suzanne Bruce, forty-nine eighty-five, Snow Valley Lane. Um, I really just wanted to come here tonight and say that I know a lot of things have been very divisive and very um hard for the last couple of years, and I want to say that even though I don't agree with all the decisions that you guys have made over the past few years, I never will. I will never agree with any, all of your decisions. I don't agree with all of the decisions my husband makes or my kids make. But I respect you. I respect all of you, and I appreciate all the time and that you've given to our community. Mr. Level, I appreciate your dedication to our schools. Mrs. Schaefer, I appreciate you and your dedication to our schools and our students. Mrs. O'Connor, I appreciate you as well. Mrs. Casper, I appreciate and respect you. Mr. Pearl, the same goes for you. I appreciate you stepping up at a time whenever we lost a board member. And Mr. Noah and Mrs. Logan, I appreciate you guys as well. I have developed a little bit of a relationship with some of you. We have discussed our differences, and I feel comfortable being able to talk with you, and I appreciate you always being here for me and listening to me. And thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Root. Angela Oswald. Vicki Foley.
Suzanne.
Diane Murray.
Murray, forty-seven fifty-five, Winter Park Drive, Liberty Township. Uh, I want to start out by saying, you know, I know most of you at the DIAS, uh, Mr. Pearl, unfortunately, I've not had the pleasure to meet you personally. And as the prior person said, I do respect all of you, and thank you for your service, for encouraging a forum where we can have public debate, knowing that we're all not going to agree on um issues that come before us. There's two things I want to um touch on in my time really quickly. One of them uh happened today. My daughter has a pulmonologist. She had surgery for breathing issues back in January, and she did receive a mask exemption through Lakota. But today, she showed up in school to Wonder Lab and was segregated from the rest of her class. She had to sit in Wonder Lab by herself without the rest of her class in an interactive, hands-on environment. So my question is, how will the board, the district, address issues? I know equity and inclusion tend to be hot-button topics right now, but how do we make kids who have medical issues still be able to participate in the class without feeling like pariahs? Um, and number two, um, to say yes, there is a lot of information flying around very quickly. I appreciate that Lakota has the opportunity to have local control. Um, and we have board members that live in the community that have to, you know, face the members of the community. I also want to say that along those lines, the science is constantly evolving, as we've discussed. And being a Lakota grad and having gone through Lakota's education system, I appreciate also having critical debate and questions about settled issues. Um, if you look back in history, it was perfectly safe for people to be unrestrictedly exposed to X-rays. Smoking for pregnant women was also considered safe. Um, but over time, as we learn more, these things have changed, so I appreciate you guys constantly being willing to evaluate uh this issue as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. My name's Angela Oswald, four-nine-four-seven, Streamside Court in Liberty Township. I have an older son who's addressed the board before, who is currently at college, and then I have a son who is a senior at Lakota East. Seeing what I saw tonight, I can tell you without a doubt, my senior child will still be coming to school unmasked. If that is challenged, you leave us no choice but to seek legal action. You are taking away the constitutional rights that my son has to make a choice whether he wants to wear a mask or not. I am his parent. I make his decisions for him until he reaches the age of eighteen. I decide what he's going to do. His father decides what he's going to do. End of story. The school and the school board has absolutely no business whatsoever taking my place as his parent. I understand that there are families who need people to step in. Mine doesn't. I will raise my children, and I will have them do what I feel is best for them in their best interest. CRT is also on my list. I do know for a fact that critical race theory is being taught in the school. A paper came out, and it's called Source. It is part of critical race theory. I was downstairs in the cafe, or cafeteria, whatever you want to call it, listening to the things that were being said, and the president. listening to the things that were being said and the presentations made while talking down there with a parent and her daughter that attended tonight. The daughter informed us and her mother as well that today, during her advisory time while she's in eighth grade at Ridge, she was made to watch a video, an LGBTQ video about a young girl who wanted to transition to a boy and play basketball. I remember my oldest being in fifth grade at Cherokee Elementary and getting papers sent home saying, we would like to show a video about how boys are boys and girls are girls and this is the difference between the two, just so they start to realize. I had to sign that permission slip. And if I said I didn't want him to watch it, he was removed from the room when they showed it. This young girl's mother was not told. This happened. She didn't know till she picked her daughter up from school. To me, that's criminal. That is completely out of line, the school crossed the line in those regards and should be held accountable for trying to take the place of a parent. The school has to realize there are lines. You are here to educate basic core values, math, English.
Thank you, Mrs. Altman.
All the people on the second, if.
Sorry, what?
It's all the people that signed up to the second.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. We have reached the part of our closing comments. Mr. Miller?
I'm good, just to clean up a couple items if I can, if that's all right?
Oh, yeah, sure.
The Butler County ESC increase was three percent. And the kilns for Adena and Indy have been ordered or in process. So I made somebody happy. And then, Mr. Murray, I'll find out about your first question, so I'm sorry that that happened, but I'll find out. And then to Mrs. Oswald, if she's still here or not, I'll find out about the movie news to me. So when I find something out, we'll check it out. I think I think I hit them all, but that's it for closing comments, thank you for all of you being in the room and sharing your opinions and for hanging in for a while.
Yeah. I'm going to circle back because, you know, I think there was a lot said tonight and trying to take it all in and process it, and it's going to be an ongoing conversation piece, but but I want to say thank you to this board. Like I said, I, you know, I was surprised at the beginning of the meeting by something very nice that was said from colleagues and people who I worked alongside for several years, which is about appropriately and adequately funding our kids. And it matters. And so thank you for that time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Pearl?
I want to congratulate Jenny again and very valuable to our district, so thank you to Mr. Miller and his team for a few days, let's keep it up. And I I just want to highlight just a couple of the things that I think may have gotten glossed over, you know, in light of us being a little disjointed because of masks or a lot disjointed because of masks. You know, we're back to, you know, high school football without attendance limitations, and that's that's a positive. Quarantines are down, that's a positive, so I think we have to, you know, while we continue to have this debate and conversation, let's also focus on a lot of the good that's happening too, because it is happening, so to our teachers and students, let's have a great year.
I've said a lot already tonight, but I do want to say congratulations, Jenny, when when I talk with other school districts across the state, your name is known. And and that's a positive, I appreciate the fact that you translate our financial information in a way that helps our community to truly understand it. I appreciate that you keep a very tight grip on the checkbook and appreciate all the extra time and effort that you put in traveling back and forth to Columbus on the school fair funding formula, so thank you for that effort. And Matt, I disagree with you on this decision, but I do support you and you know that. And it should come as no surprise that there were no surprises in anything I said tonight. I've already talked to Mr. Miller about those before this meeting, so not intended to be disrespectful, but I am in disagreement.
Neither am I.
We'll talk about that.
Again, to build on what Michael was saying, I mean, we have homecomings also coming up, that's something to celebrate that didn't happen last year to look forward to, it's super early for West, it's happening Friday night. So I guess there were some scheduling conflicts, so the students are looking forward to that, I know, this weekend. Homecoming game, I guess, is Friday, the dance is actually Saturday. So you'll see some dressed up kids around town doing some pictures, I'm sure, if you're out and about. Thankful that our students are getting these opportunities, which is certainly, I think, everyone's objective, regardless of where you fall. Again, we've all said a lot this evening, but I'm thankful for your laser focus on creating opportunities for students, which is what you've been focused on pre-COVID and post-COVID, so thank you for continuing to focus on creating opportunities for students. I know you've consulted with your colleagues around the country, not just in Ohio, and have looked for any opportunity and whatever you can do to make sure you continue to create opportunities for students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add. We just appreciate you, appreciate the back to the school and the nearly two thousand staff that's made it happen. It's been a good start to the year.
Yes. Yes, thank you to, again, Jenny, congratulations, it was fun pulling off that surprise. I'm glad we we could do it. Again, thank everyone for coming. This is not an easy seat where I sit right now. We all, like Brad said, have a passion for the district and a passion for the kids and are doing what we think is best for everyone, and I realize that people don't always agree and that I would love it if there was more agreeing to disagree and less name calling and threats and all of the things that are happening that we are receiving as a board, because again, we're not horrible human beings, we are people that were passionate about education, passionate about this school district and trying to do the best we can in a time that's not easy, so. I need a motion to go into executive session to enter to the executive session for the purpose of employment and compensation of a public employee or official, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, when you're ready.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes, we will be making no decisions when we come out of executive session.
Are we moving?
Uh, yes.